Okay, good evening. And tonight, before we get started officially with our meeting, I'm honored to welcome Reverend Muntzinger Peter Rao from St. Peterschanel Catholic Church in Roswell to lead us in invocation tonight.
I thank you all for this honor today and on behalf of my parishioners who are residing in the city of Milton, I thank you for all that you do for them. And so let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As this council begins this meeting, help all involved to engage in a meaningful discussion, guide hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, and impart your wisdom upon the activities that take place so that the affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Fill your people with your grace, Lord God, as decisions are made that might affect the good people of the city of Milton. And continue to remind us that all we do here and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the truth of the greater glory of you for the service of humanity. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting for the Milton City Council for Monday, June 16th, 2014 to order. If our city clerk would please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the June 16th, 2014 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an agenda item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Bill Lusk is traveling and absent this evening. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, and we appreciate you being here tonight and look forward to tonight's meeting. Suti, if you will please call the next item on the agenda.
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 14168.
Okay. Does council have any changes they would like to make on this? I think staff may have a couple. I believe we want to move the unfinished business agenda item number 14-153 after reports and presentations, and then move the new business agenda numbers 14-177, 14-178, and 14-179 after unfinished business. Is there anything else, staff or council?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Now, this is just for any general public comment that doesn't have anything to do with items on our meeting. If you have specific comment as we get to an item, then we'll take that down. But do we have any general comments?
We do not, sir.
Okay. We can move on to the consent agenda. Suti, if you'll call the items.
Our first item this evening is approval of the May 19th, 2014 city council regular meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14169. Next, approval of the June 2nd, 2014 city council regular meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14170. Approval of the June 9th, 2014 special called city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14171. Our next item is approval of the financial statements for the period ending May 2014. Agenda item number 14172. Next, approval of a three-year intergovernmental agreement for the provision of animal control services between the city of Milton and Fulton County. Agenda item number 14173. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Dr. Thomas L. Daniels for creation of a green print plan for the city. Agenda item number 14174. Our seventh item this evening is approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Prime Contractors, Inc. for renovation services at fire station number 43. Agenda item number 14175. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a contract with Payroll Strategies, LLC to provide payroll, HRIS, and time and attendance to the city. Agenda item number 14176.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Move on to our reports and presentations. And I am proud to call this first item, recognition for Memorial Day Essay Contest finalists. And hopefully those of you that were able to attend our Memorial Day service, which was great, great service, and we got to, if you don't know, we had a bunch of students that had written essays. And we had one, obviously one winner, and then we had four other honorable mention essays. And our winner was Ms. Ashley Hayes, who is in the audience tonight, and she got to read her essay for us during the ceremony. Now, I certainly don't expect to, but Ashley, if you wanted to read it tonight, you're welcome to, but if you're not prepared or don't want to, you don't have to. Love to have you come up and into the microphone and read it for all the folks that are sitting here because it's very impressive. And then after that, I want to give you and the other kids some awards.
Memorial Day may not be our nation's biggest holiday, but it is one of the most important. Many people believe that Memorial Day is the kickoff to summer vacation, and they forget about its true meaning to celebrate and honor all who served to protect our country. Without these soldiers, America might not be the peaceful, safe place it is today. With honor comes remembrance, and that is a big part of Memorial Day. Flags and flowers are often placed at the graves of fallen soldiers. Other traditions that have been used for decades include planting red poppies at the grave, displaying the American flag, and pausing it precisely 3:00 PM in remembrance of the soldiers who died so that others may live. These traditions started on May 5th, 1868, when John Logan, commander in chief of the Grand Army of the Republic, proclaimed the first national day of remembrance. The day was named Decoration Day, which is now modern-day Memorial Day, and was celebrated every year on May 30th. Decoration Day started during the American Civil War to honor the fallen Union and Confederate soldiers. Decoration Day became an official holiday in 1968, and the day was changed to the last Monday in May. Although the holiday has gone through many changes, the importance of the holiday still remains the same. During Memorial Day, it is important to focus on the quote, "All gave some, some gave all." Anyone who ever served in our military gave up something in their life, like being away from their family. Many soldiers gave more, their lives. Memorial Day is an important holiday and should continue in honor of our soldiers. People who are willing to risk their lives to protect America at least deserve this one holiday. Memorial Day should mean more than the beginning of summer. It should remind people that they can enjoy their freedom because all gave some, some gave all.
Okay. And if you'd stay right there, Ashley, and certainly, I know your family is very proud of you, I know your teacher's proud of you, and also we at the city are very proud of you. So if my council would come down with me, I'd like to give you a...
Just this certificate of recognition for first place. Certified certificate of award is Ashley Hayes, Temple Middle School, and it's titled "All Gave Some, Some Gave All," 2014 City of Milton Memorial Day Essay Contest. I've also got here a $50 Barnes &amp; Noble card. Everybody give a hand for that.
You want to come on?
I tried.
You want to come on? Standing behind this or something?
I feel skewed in. Jason told me to count, but I'm not. Very good, thank you.
CJ, for being here, we're really proud and glad you're here. I don't need that, that's awesome.
Congratulations.
And I'm just going to mention that the other names was Tess Abraham, Campbell Harmon, Grayson Cleveland, and Libby Podlock were also honorable mentions. I'm real proud of them too. And I've got certificates and gift cards from them, we'll have to figure out how to get those two together. I apologize, earlier I checked and Libby wasn't here, but I apologize to you for that. Hold on just a second. We're proud of you too, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your license.
Thanks, Momma Dad. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business, so if Suti, if you'll please call it, what time?
First item this evening, consideration of an ordinance accepting the revised Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System, GM EBS, defined benefit retirement plan, and general addendum. Agenda item number 14153. First presentation was heard at the June 2nd, 2014 regular city council meeting. Mr. Sam Traeger.
Good evening. The ordinance before you today basically accomplishes three things. It closes down the current defined benefit pension plan to new hires and people who are rehired on or after July 1st, 2014. It also kind of clears up some of the technical language on when a city manager can retire and what age that it takes place. And finally, it also changes the actuarial tables for employees where it allows employees to go for, it's a 50% actuarial reduction if the employees retire at age 55 and 10 years of service. It now changes that to a 30% actuarial reduction, so they retire at 70% benefit. This has financial impact of about $57,000 a year on the defined benefit plan. Can I answer any questions?
No, I might ask, Sam, just, and all of us have looked at it, but there's, you know, few folks, citizens in the audience, could you just brief recap of why and how this helps the city going further forward?
Really, it's twofold, on the defined benefit plan and shutting that part of it down. It helps sort of define what the city will pay for pension benefits going forward. It's a finite amount, it doesn't change, it's not subject to fluctuations in the marketplace. But also, on the other side, changing that actuarial table from a 50% reduction to a 30% reduction will allow some of our public safety people to retire at an earlier age with a little bit more of a benefit. That's something they've been pushing for. It's a pretty big hit with 50% reduction at age 55 if they wanted to leave. So this will allow them to retire a little bit earlier with a little bit more benefit at a reasonable price.
Okay. Any questions, Karen?
And how many years of service did they have to have in order to...
They have to have at least 10 years of service then and age 55.
Anybody else?
I would say, conceptually, I like the fact that we could transfer that risk from the city taxpayers to our employees as well when it comes to their retirement, and that's ultimately what we're trying to do here, so definitely agree with that.
And also want to have a good plan for our employees too, so be fair to them.
Right.
Okay. Now, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14153. Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Koontz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll move on to new business. Suti, if you'll call that new business item.
Consideration of a resolution to approve the revised adoption agreement between the city of Milton and ICMA RC to limit participation in the defined contribution plan to employees hired prior to July 1st, 2014. Agenda item number 14177. Mr. Sam Traeger.
This is simply the other side of what you just passed. The city also maintains a defined contribution plan along with a DB plan for our current employees. As we're going through this, we also came to the realization that we need to shut down the DC plan to people hired on or after July 1st, 2014. So this simply shuts down the current DC plan to new enrollees. Going forward, hopefully by the July 7th meeting, we'll have another agenda item defining the new defined contribution plan. That's still sort of in the works, but it was necessary also to shut down the current plan to new enrollees at this time.
Okay, are there any questions for Sam on that? All right, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we accept or pass Agenda Item Number 14-177.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Morick, second by Councilmember Longoria. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sam. Suti, if you'll call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution to approve FY 2015 through 2017 cooperation agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia and Fulton County, Georgia to continue its participation in the county's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnerships Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, program for the years 2015, 2016, and 2017. This is Agenda Item Number 14178. Ms. Michelle McIntosh Ross.
Good evening. We, I came before you a couple weeks ago to just go over the item, so you should be a little bit familiar with it. It is the Department of Housing and Community and Urban Development, which is HUD, requires that Fulton County undergo recertification or requalification to maintain their status as an urban entitlement recipient for the Community Development Block Grant. And that requires that the municipalities that want to participate under the Fulton County CDBG program would submit an approved resolution along with an executed cooperative cooperation agreement to Fulton County. So we have before you a resolution that would be approving the signing of the cooperation agreement to continue being a part of the Fulton County CDBG program.
Okay. Do I have any questions? Michelle? Okay, do I have, anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution, then Agenda Item Number 14178.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Thurman for approval of this item. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suti, if you'll call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Hedley Construction Corporation for the renovation of the Hopewell House. This is Agenda Item Number 14179. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're asking for your consideration of a construction contract for the renovation work on the Hopewell House. In that regard, I wanted to go back and update a presentation that was originally given to you in February at the completion of the construction documents. I guess the slide, most important slide, is going to be the last one, but at that presentation, we basically went over the site plan and the floor plans for the renovation efforts, and we also discussed a little bit about the budget. So if we go back and look at the budget that was based on the construction drawings at that time compared to what the actual dollars from the construction bid came in at, you can see that we're a little bit below the estimated price from that time. The original budget of $700,000 was based on the early conceptual drawings that were done, and we were looking through the design and construction bidding process to finally come up with our ultimate dollar figure. So in that price, or in that process, we issued our standard invitation to bid. We did receive only one bid on this particular project. In reviewing that bid, we looked at it and determined that it was a reasonable and responsible bid based on our construction cost estimates from the construction documents, and therefore we're bringing it forward to you tonight for consideration for approval. That construction bid is based on a base construction cost of $581,000. The construction administration costs, you can see, have gone down a little bit because we're going to do a substantial amount of that work in-house with Bob Buscemi. The ad alternates were a little bit lower. Those alternates included an additional restroom in the lower portion of the house, the furniture and fixtures, as well as appliances to be included in the overall project, and then a contingency on top of that. And so at the end of this, we would basically end up with a turnkey project. We'd be able to walk in, we have an agreement, current agreement with North Fulton Senior Services to operate that facility on a day-to-day basis, and this would give them the facility in order to be able to do that. So we are asking you for consideration tonight for approval of this construction contract, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Mayor, I want to ask one person and direct us akin, legal. Obviously, this was advertised and put out to the public for bids and whatnot, and we, as Carter said, just got one, received one bid.
Correct.
Just want to, I'm assuming all, you're comfortable with that, that, you know, everyone else had a chance to put a bid in, but...
Absolutely, that happens. You go out to bid and only one, each bid is very, unfortunately, is very common.
Okay. All right, now I'll open up questions for Carter. Council. Karen?
Do you have any idea of why we only received one bid on a project this size?
I don't. I think what we are seeing, though, is there's a lot of work out there right now, and we're just, it's just a busy time for the contractors to be able to line up subs and get work available, so that's the best I can tell you at this point.
Yeah, I'm seeing that somewhat in the market, and it's a combination of not, we being busy, but also a lot of contractors are tapped out from the past, and so bonding abilities and all that, so it's limited the pool of who could actually bid on it, so... Anybody else?
Well, I...
Joe?
Just as a follow-up to what Karen's asking for, because, you know, obviously, I'm happy that the actual, you know, amount has gone down from what we were allowing, but when you only have one person bidding on it, how do you compare it to anything else? So that's sort of, it's sort of strange. You know, even in a tough or a busy market, I would think at least two people would have the time to make some money, unless we put some kind of constraints in the bid process itself, but they just looked at it as, oh, it's too much of a headache, we don't want to deal with it. But I don't think that was the case.
We definitely try not to do that, and we did want to make sure that we got a qualified contractor in there, and I mean, anytime you do that, you try to make sure you leave it open to as many bidders as you can.
Right.
But I don't think it was too restrictive that that would have precluded anybody who was qualified from bidding on it. I think as work has just gotten busier, people just haven't had an opportunity to ramp back up from staffing and materials standpoint, and so, as the mayor mentioned, they're just tapped out right now trying to take care of some of the projects that are already on the books. So timing has a little bit to do with it. You know, you want to try and make sure you get it out there on the streets when work's available.
Let me ask to, you know, for Councilmember Longoria's concerns with only having one bid and how you compare, you know, how do you know that's a good price if you only got one? But I guess you could go back to your conceptual budget and, you know, with staff you guys worked on and all that, so that would give you some kind of benchmark to know that the number's reasonable, correct?
Yes, that's right, and that's what we did. We went back through our detailed estimate that was developed by the architect, and that's based on a number of projects that they've done in the past, so it's reasonable costs, and we really compare it to that. You know, if we had exceeded that by a significant amount, then we would have really thought that something was wrong either in the process or we just didn't have a reasonable bid, but because it was within that budget and it was reasonable for what we were expecting it from the construction drawings, we felt like it was, it was a good bid.
Okay. I'll just off to Councilmember Longoria, my experience has been that if the market perceives conditions in the bid are improper or un... perceives conditions in the bid are improper or onerous, typically, they, a lot of times, they will in fact contact the government and say, this shouldn't have been in there, this was unreasonable. I don't, I'm not aware of anything of that kind happening in this situation.
All right, Karen?
I have, I mean, I, I think I've been outspoken in the past in the fact that, I mean, as much as I favor the project, I just wonder whether or not this is the best use of our city money at this current time. Have we actually spent the time to go through it to figure out if there are any ways, any cost-saving things that can be done as part of this project so that it's kept to a more reasonable, I know it's less than what, originally, when we talked about this, we talked about a five hundred thousand dollar project of which two hundred and fifty we thought were going to be paid for by the C D B G fund, so we thought the city was only going to be paying two hundred and fifty, and now suddenly, we're into a project where the city's paying, you know, seven hundred and seventy, and I, I think it's a great project. I just want to make sure that we're getting the most for our residents for the money.
Right, and I think with any project, we try to go through a value engineering process, both during the development of the construction drawings and once we get construction bids back in. Sometimes those value engineering alternatives are more readily apparent in a more complex project, and while there's some moving components to this, it's a relatively simple project on the renovation of the house, and so while there may be some through the process, I think most of that V E was done during the development of the construction drawings. So I think we've tried to take advantage of any of those opportunities where we can, and obviously, if the contractor has any V E options that are available to him as we work through the project, we'll consider those as they come up.
Okay, and to address Councilwoman Thurman's concerns, and also Bob can certainly speak to Carter, but, you know, if you feel comfortable, you know, do you feel in your professional opinion that, you know, it's smart money spent? I mean, obviously, you could cut costs and take some items out, but then, you know, it could greatly impact the use of, of the project or the property. So what's your professional opinion is, you know, is that smart money being spent? If we were to go in and try to decrease the cost, you know, is that going to negatively impact, or are you at that point where, you know, you looked at it and there's probably a lot more you could spend, but pared it down some already, or what's your thoughts?
I think we've done a lot of that through the development of the construction drawings. Is it smart, smart money to be spent? I think it's money that is necessary to be spent to bring this facility up to code standards that it needs to be for this particular use. I will leave the rest of it up to your direction from the council as to whether or not it's, it's smart money, but I think we have looked at this in a number of different ways to try and value engineering this project to where we can get it for the intended use of the facility.
Yeah, I'll just, your thoughts on that? Rick?
Can you talk, maybe you can answer this, Stacy, where, what, what are the sources of funds? How are we actually paying? I know we've got the money allocated, but where's it coming from? Talking to what Karen had said before, what we thought we were going to get as far as funding, what is the, the makeup and where are we funding this from?
This was appropriated at the beginning during the budget amendment or budget process, so it comes from where other revenue sources are coming from, usually mostly tax dollars.
Do we have, are there grant monies that are being contributed toward this?
We do not.
So this will be, the net of it is, this is all out of city funds, we're not getting any funds, so this is a total cost borne by, out of a taxpayer dollars?
Correct.
You know, normally, I'm going to address that, and I'm not trying to sway it either way, Rick and Karen, the money that, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, staff, the money we're getting from grants and all will help with operation and the meals on wheels and senior services. So, you know, even though we're paying for the bricks and sticks of it, going forward, our citizens will get a value out of it that will be borne by, not by, by the taxpayer dollars, am I correct to say that?
That's correct.
So, you know, if not, we would be paying money as we go forward for our services, but we're paying money upfront, but then getting some services from other revenue sources that aren't from, directly from the city. Okay, anybody else? Questions, comments? Matt?
No, I'm waiting for the votes. You know where I am.
All right, all right.
So this is going to require a budget amendment of about?
Fifty?
Fifty thousand dollars, is that correct?
All right, I'll, I'll open up for a motion.
Sir, we do have three, respectfully, we have three public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, let's, let's hear from our public.
Our first one is Ms. Melinda Ross.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melinda Ross, and I'm the manager of the Milton Senior Center, and I have two associates with me this evening. I have Cora Pickering, who is a member of the Milton Senior Center, and I also brought one of our volunteer extraordinaires, Mr. Stephen Hernandez, and we just want to speak to you on behalf of what the Senior Center means to us, as well as the, the need for a permanent location for our seniors.
And can you give your address, Melinda?
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Yes, I am with, you want my?
You can use your business address.
Business address, where our permanent, our temporary location is at the Community of Christ Church, and that's three, three, one, five Francis Road, Milton.
Okay, let me continue.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Pickering, and once again, she is a member of our Senior Center, and just to let you know, next month, we celebrate one, one whole year of being in existence for our seniors, and we currently have thirty-one participants, so we are growing and things are going well for us. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Pickering.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I live here in Milton.
Can you just, just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Cora Pickering. I live at thirty-five, forty-six Springview Court.
Okay.
Yes, I am a participant of the Milton Senior Center. I represent the seniors here today. We are very appreciative of what you're doing for us, and we are looking forward to a permanent address. You know, seniors like consistency, moving around, and so it's not so easy, but we are very, very thankful for what you're doing for us. We appreciate the transportation because some of us do not drive anymore, and some will be indoors all the time if it wasn't for the center. It's very good that we also have a meal that is, it's good, meals are good. And most of all, lots of us are doing things that we haven't done before. There are people who are in their eighties, now they're learning to knit, now they're learning to sew. Some have become artists, you should see, please stop in and see the artwork that's being done there. And the staff is very helpful, and they are very kind, because some of us are losing our memories already. But being at the center helps because you have someone within your age group to socialize with. It is very, very encouraging to go there every day, and we are very, I must say it again, are very appreciative of what you are doing, and we hope that we will get into the Hopewell House soon, and thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Hernandez, four hundred Majestic Cove, Milton, Georgia. Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you for your, giving us some time today to talk about the Milton Senior Center. I'm one of five regular volunteers that helped Melinda and Michelle help with the Milton Senior Center. As Melinda said, it's been open about a year, and I first came across it riding my bike on Francis Road, and it said, looking for volunteers, and I saw it in the Milton Herald. So I stopped in, and I met Melinda, told her I'd be interested, and that's how I got involved. So it's really through the communication of the city. I do get the emails on a regular basis from the City of Milton, but it kind of changed my life in retirement. I'm retired, but I'm not sixty-two yet, so. The opportunity of spending time with the senior citizens, and look at that, the camaraderie, the friendship, the fellowship that they have developed, and how they look after each other is, was amazing to me. And they talked about, there's arthritis exercising, where they sit in a chair, you gotta help them with that, and they have sewing, but just to see the crossroads of the senior citizen of Milton coming together, and the fellowship and the companionship that they have is unbelievable. So even though we share a facility with the church, they are in need of their own facility to call home, and that's mostly, as I get older, I realize I need stability. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Melissa, Melinda, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
As Cora and Steve have both indicated, we certainly appreciate all that you've done in terms of the support that you've given us to run the Senior Center, and as you've heard from Ms. Pickering, it is, it is a need. Socialization is a proven fact, it's a known fact, that seniors excel and do so much better if they are involved in socialization on a daily basis. A hot nutritious meal is also important. You know, as you age, you may lose your spouse, and it's no fun always eating your meals alone. Who, I don't even like to cook, but you know, when you're in your, you know, sixties, seventies, and eighties, you know, folks sometimes just kind of compromise and maybe eat like a honey bun for a meal rather than a hot nutritious meal. So that's an opportunity that we can provide for the seniors, is a hot nutritious meal. And you know, moving to the Hopewell House will give us an opportunity to really reach out to the remainder of our community, because then we can provide meals on wheels for those seniors that are homebound and do not have availability, maybe for health purposes, to get out and receive a hot nutritious meal. But not only will they be receiving a nice nutritious meal, they're also going to have some interaction and socialization from a volunteer that's affiliated with our community. So I feel like, you know, setting our seniors up for success is just so important. Seniors like to age in place, meaning the seniors that live in Milton, they want their own permanent location, something that they can connect with, a place that they can call home, something that they have so much pride about that they're going to look forward to, to come every day. So let's do that for our seniors. And you know, it's something else that I've learned just working in senior living, I've been in senior living like for ten years, and you always, and even in our center, you know, we have senior adult children that come in, people that look like us come in, and they're looking for placement for their mom or their dad that are moving them from Florida, moving them from New Jersey, that's just so common anymore, to move your adult, to, to move your family member, your mom or dad, senior mom or dad, closer to you so you can oversee your, their healthcare needs. And that's important, that they can provide them an opportunity to come to a senior living, a, a senior center, to connect with other seniors, to make friends, become part of the family, and so they feel like they are really a part of something and connected to something that's just so important. Another nice aspect for the, the Hopewell House is the fact that there are different rooms there that our seniors can go and engage in different types of activities. Currently at the church, which we really appreciate them being a temporary location for us, we have one big room. So if someone wants to do yoga in the dark, and you're not an exercise person, you're kind of out of luck there. So that person might feel a little isolated or left out because they're, they're having to sit in that area and watch other people do exercise in the dark when they would rather be playing rummy cube or, or something along those lines. But what we do and what you have supported is, is a fantastic thing. I feel very honored to be a part of the program, and I want to really set our seniors up for success, and I would love them to feel more of a part of this community and have a hum of their own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Rick?
Can I, can I, can we address a question?
Um, to whom?
To?
Ms. Ross.
Ladies speaking.
Yeah, you could ask a question.
I guess, I appreciate your comments. One, one question I've got, I'm not an expert in, in senior centers or senior care. You've seen the plans of, of the Hopewell House, and what's planned. How does that fit into, from an ideal standpoint, or what we're trying to look and what we're trying to build? Because I do support trying to do more for our community. Do you see this as a functional, good use or good usable center?
I do. I had the opportunity when I first came on board to sit down and go through the, the process and talk about the plans, and I think it's very successful, and it will set our folks up for success.
Should think from a space and functionality and flow.
Space and functionality, and you know, the seniors, I, I know that's a historic building here in Milton, and there's so much pride about this, about the Hopewell House, and that is something that the seniors will really embrace and respect, the fact that you are preserving history here in Milton, and they're all going to be on board for that and support that and do everything they can, you know, to help that be successful and to be a part of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
I, I guess one thing, I'm, I've, I've been over there at Hopeful Baptist Church, and a lot of the seniors up there honestly have asked me, why did we buy the house? And they didn't really have a, if they heard that we were going to put into a senior center, they actually thought we were crazy for doing it. And this is what I've heard from my constituents up where I am. Obviously, they're worried about the traffic as they're coming down that roadway as it is. So I asked the question, you know, why is a partnership at a better traffic location with a church not more advantageous or, or, or a better place like where you are right now? Obviously, the community is asking the question to me, and I got to know if we were to have a place for meals on wheels and for seniors, is this the right location? And why couldn't another location be a better place? And that's really just the question.
Can I clarify something akin, just to, you know, and this is not typical, I'm just kind of winging it here, letting, ask a question. Just to clarify, this is not with the applicant, and, and this is just a general question?
Sure.
That you're asking, it's, it's, you know, she's not representing or the applicant, but if it gives you some information, then I'm fine with letting you ask the question.
I just haven't heard the other side on that, about the answer to that question.
Okay, and that's a very good question. You know, we've always considered the church to be a temporary location, and it is just from my experience of working in senior living, when you operate out of, let's say, a, a church space, people in the community do not see you as an active senior living center. They see you as an adult daycare. That's how you're, you're viewed, you're, you're a, a place where folks, they're not, that are not as independent as the folks that we have at the center, they need like a service for, you know, someone to be in there with eyes on them all day long. So I think that, that is what, that is what I've been, have experienced working through the church. I think it's important that the seniors do have their own home. It's, once again, I don't feel like they feel as connected because we, with the, with Milton, because we are with the church, they really want their own home and their own site. And to me, the Hopewell House is perfect because it is a historic home, it represents so much history, and our seniors understand and respect that, and it's going to give them the space that they need to do the things that they enjoy and, and they like to do.
Can I ask you another question? Two questions. Honestly, I'm concerned about safety as they try to pull into that location, as they come around that corner.
You know, I would almost say, that question, I'd rather direct to professionals with traffic and engineering, because the average citizen.
And just to let you know, like, we're, working in senior living too, you are trained and trained and trained to, on safety measures, and very big on fall prevention and that kind of thing, but I know that was addressed when we were talking about the plans for the Hopewell House, so I think, but what was discussed was, I think, the road was going to be broadened. I may be speaking out of turn?
No, no, I, this is, this is important to me, because I want to hear this.
Okay, the road was going to be broadened because you have to make sure that. Okay. The road was going to be broadened because you have to make sure that a fire truck and an ambulance can get up there in access to, for any emergencies. And there are, are going to be some parking places for seniors. You know, we have some folks that don't drive. That's another nice thing about services that we offer. We can provide transportation to and from the center for those that no longer drive to get them out for socialization. So we were told that it would be safe for the bus, you know, once everything was said and done, that for the bus to get to and from as well.
And how many seniors do you think would be servicing in the area when it's all built?
I would say, I, I think our attendance will go up to forty and, to forty and fifty. However, you know, that doesn't include seniors that would be receiving services for meals on wheels. Because we've not done meals on wheels because working out of the church, we have a smaller kitchen, so we can't accommodate those folks. But I, I don't know what the average would be for meals on wheels.
Okay. Karen?
Carter, I know we have discussed in the past, having this facility be, it would be able to be used and rented for special things. How is that going to work out with the seniors as far as, you know, utilizing the space?
Well, under that agreement, after normal operating hours of the North Fulton Senior Center, it would be available to the city for community activities, whether it's events or, or other activities within the community meetings, things of that nature.
And what are the normal, what's considered normal hours?
Eight to four.
Eight to four, okay. So-
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. So the other times it would be available for special events?
And you know, we have this agreement with the church now. Basically, every weekend we have to put things away and pack up for church services and activities to take place there. So regardless of what the city was going to have, it would be my responsibility to make sure that things were put in place to make it nice for those that were coming in for a special event.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sudi, do we have any more?
That's all, sir.
Public comment?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me?
I'll close the hearing, but then-
I just wanted to make one comment from Councilwoman Thurman, just so that it was clear on the budget implications. Yes, it would be a budget transfer of the 53-5 to get us to the existing contract amount of $632,000. But the contingency that's included in that overall budget number, the $50,000 is a contractual contingency that's available from an administrative staff standpoint, but not included in that $632,000. So that would also be, if needed, an additional transfer necessary.
So to clarify, you're saying that, just to make it simple-
$103,500 if we used all of the contingency.
Okay. What I was going to say, if we didn't use the contingency-
It would just be the 53.
Right at 632.
So what's the 103 additional? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And based on my review of the May statements, it looks like we have, so far this year, are over on our revenue and under, over, under, on our expenses so that we would have funds available easily to transfer that 53 over?
Correct.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve consideration of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Headley Construction Corporation for the renovation of Hopewell House Agenda Item Number 14179.
Second.
I have a motion and from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Hewitt, in approval of this item. Any comments? I just, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I just want to say that we purchased this property some time ago and at the time we had a vision that the property was going to serve several purposes. Number one, it was one of the few historic properties that we had in Milton that was still standing and represented a, a time period and a, a concept that we were all embracing, embracing as a city. We talk about the City of Milton being rural, the City of Milton being this special thing that exists in North Fulton, and, and that was a piece of the pie. And I got behind the idea of buying the property and I got behind the idea that the vision that we had, including embracing our historical, you know, roots, providing a facility that citizens could use for a number of different reasons, not just for senior citizens. And I, I think it's a great idea and I think that all we need to do is act and finish the work that we started in order to achieve that vision. And sure, maybe it's not the best location, but that doesn't really matter. What matters is we can make it work for what we're trying to do. And I think that through the efforts of our citizens, the people that are engaged in this process already are showing us that this is something that can work. And so I am 100% behind this and I, I really want to see this thing go through.
Okay. And I, I just want to make a comment, a couple of comments. One, one being in the past, I've been involved with senior services. Also every year I go and, once a year deliver meals. And just have to say, as some of the comments today, it is a, a place where, where folks feel proud to go. It's our place, it's part of our community. I know we, and that's very important. I know we, we, we get some, you know, in our constituents, you know, things change over time and certain things are more important for a younger person than a middle-aged person and then a senior. And I truly believe that over time, you know, some of the folks that may say, hey, we shouldn't be spending money on that, we should be doing a park for our kids. But one day we'll, we'll enjoy the, enjoy this building and, and senior, you know, the senior center. And also with, you know, not only having a place for somebody to go, as a lot of folks would do, but also more folks will get meals on wheels, which will come out of this, this facility. And as said, it's important for somebody to get a, a good meal. But what I've noticed, it's, it's a lot more than the meal. It's really having a familiar face show up every day and just saying, hey, how are you, checking on you. And whereas you might have a senior that, you know, nobody comes by every few weeks and, and they could have fallen or a problem. So, you know, you kind of have somebody looking after them and seeing, making sure everything's okay. So, you know, I do think it's, it'll, it'll be a great service. We also have, you know, an individual in our audience that I believe used to own the property, so probably knows a lot of the history. I think Milton's a little different than most everywhere else and we want to be a little different. It's kind of neat to have a historic building that, you know, our seniors get to use as well as special events, but also to be able to preserve a, a really neat structure with some history. And also want to be sure and mention that we have a, a former council member, Councilmember Zonner Bailey, in the audience who was also part of a positive way of bringing this, this forward. So we appreciate that. But, so anybody else have anything else?
Sure.
Yep.
I'm surprised to be here guys tonight. I think that, you know, as far as this, this house goes, I think there was a better way to achieve this objective we were going to do. The Hopewell House in my mind wasn't the answer to helping to serve our seniors. I think we could have done it at a much lower cost. But then slapping the historical designation on the house, which should have been done, I didn't think the city should actually own that. But as a council, it's important that as we go through this project, we will have challenges with it economically over time. But we need to stay united in this front now to make it the absolute best possible senior house it's going to be. If we're going to go down this road, then we need everybody united behind it and the Senate will unite behind it as well.
Okay. All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If, Sudi, if you will, please call the next item.
Our next item is going to be the zoning agenda. And I'll read the rules. At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning, petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits and associated concurrent variances in addition to ordinances, resolutions and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The planning commission has heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during the meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the community development department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. What an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action, being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider this application. It shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 1318 Birmingham Highway West Side with a frontage of approximately 373 feet by Piedmont Atlantic Capital to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to CUP Community Unit Plan to develop 13 single-family residences on 19.5 acres. This is Agenda Item Number 14154. First presentation was heard at the June 2nd, 2014 Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This rezoning application, the applicant is requesting to withdraw this item.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request for withdrawal.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion from Councilmember Thurman and a second from Councilmember Longoria to accept a withdrawal from the applicant. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, oh, it's like we have a unanimous vote for acceptance of a withdrawal.
Our next item this evening is consideration of ZM 1404-305 Crooked Stick Drive Zoned CUP Community Unit Plan to modify Condition 1E, RZ 85-181 to the following, to reduce the 100-foot building setback from the property line of the CUP to 50 feet by C.D. Hayes. This is Agenda Item Number 14156. First presentation was heard at the June 2nd, 2014 Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before we start specifically on this application, let me just remind you that this is a zoning modification under the CUP, which is, even that we have a moratorium in place for CUPs, but those are for rezonings, not for zoning modifications. So I just wanted to make that point of information for both this one and the one subsequent to this one. So this slide shows in red the, the parcel in question. Current zoning, as mentioned, is, is part of a CUP. And the condition to be modified is the current CUP provides at least 100-foot building setback from the property line of the CUP. The requested modification is to provide at least 100-foot building setback line from the property line of the CUP except for Lot 12, which is 305 Crooked Stick Drive. And in that, in this case, to provide a 50-foot building setback along the south property line. And as background, the subject site is located within the estates at Atlanta National, which is Zoned CUP pursuant to RZ 85-181, and is developed with a single-family residence. Since the incorporation of the city, there have been five approved modification requests to reduce the 100-foot setback in the CUP. There was a community zoning information held on May 26 and there was no one in attendance at the meeting. And this is the site plan showing the modification. The purpose of the proposed reduction is to construct a hearth, gazebo and arbor. Based on the topography, a pair of retaining walls parallel to each other for a length of approximately 130 feet to create a planter is also proposed to be constructed. Staff notes that the adjacent property to the south is a portion of the Capital City Club and is undeveloped. The proposed additions to the existing lot will not impact the entire width of the south property line, but approximately 130 feet, and should only have a minimum impact to the property to the south. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional to modify Condition 1E as requested. To the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows, to provide at least a 100-foot building setback from the property line of the CUP except for Lot 12, which shall provide a 50-foot building setback along the south property line. That is my presentation.
Okay. Do we have any questions right now? Bill? Do you have any public comment on this, Sudi?
We do have one public comment in support and that comes from Jason Coleman.
Good evening. I'm Jason Coleman, 2430 Weber Heights Way, Beaufort, Georgia. I am the contractor for Mr. and Mrs. Devers Hayes. And I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have and what we're trying to achieve here for them.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay?
It looks to me like this is just kind of an outdoor living area. It's not like it's going to be an enclosed heated.
Exactly. That's exactly what it is.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments?
That's all, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing. Again, if there's any questions or whatever for staff, if not, I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve a consideration of ZM 14-04, Agenda Item Number 14-156.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, a second from, sounds like Councilmember Coats. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi.
Our next item this evening, under zoning, consideration of ZM 1405-16720 Quayside Drive Zoned CUP Community Unit Plan to modify Condition 3A, RZ 0670 to the following, to reduce the front setback from 30 feet to 28 feet and 3 inches by Jane A. Schwartz. This is Agenda Item Number 14157. First presentation was heard at the June 2nd, 2014 Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This slide here shows the property in question. And the current zoning is a CUP as previously mentioned. The condition requested to be modified, the minimum design standards are, for the CUP, a minimum front, front yard setback of 30 feet. The request is to reduce the front setback from 30 feet to 28 feet and 3 inches. As background, the subject site is located in Kingsley Estate, which is Zoned CUP Community Unit Plan pursuant to RZ 06-70, and is developed with a single-family residence. After an as-built survey was completed, it was discovered that a small portion of the existing house encroached into the minimum front, minimum front yard setback at 28 feet 4 inches. The community zoning information meeting was held on May 26 and there was no one in attendance at the meeting. And this is the site plan showing the encroachment, you can see it, of the front of the house over the setback line. Our recommendation is based on the small encroachment that does not negatively impact the existing lot or nearby properties. Staff recommends approval conditional to modify Condition 3A as requested. To the owner's agreement, to the following site development considerations, the minimum design standards are minimum front yard setback 30 feet except for 16720 Quayside Drive, Lot 48, to be 28 feet 3 inches. That's my presentation. That's my presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions? Guess, how big a deal would it be to move the house back? A foot and maybe 3 inches.
I'm sorry I couldn't handle this administratively, but, which is why we had to bring it forward.
All right, Rick?
Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, Item Number ZM 14-05.
Mayor, respectfully, we do have a public comment.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's my fault. Public comment? I forgot.
Jane Schwartz, 16720 Quayside Drive. I'm happy you will hopefully approve it. The builder, I guess, didn't figure that out when they did the foundation. So it's a very, 23 feet is kind of the area that's encroaching, so it's not noticeable. That's all.
Okay. Is that all public comment?
That's all, sir.
Not all closed the hearing then. And also, I would like to say, well, go ahead, Mr. Morgan, I think you had a motion.
Make a motion that we approve, ZM 14-05.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Morgan, a second from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And I do want to say, you know, we are here from the government, but, you know, fortunately sometimes we're all human, and builders are human, and there's a slight, you know, fortunately we can work through something like this. Sorry for any of the inconvenience. All right, Sudi, if you would please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of ZM 1403 Southeast Corner of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road, containing 22.30 acres, currently zoned mix, mixed-use, and AG1 agricultural to modify Conditions 1C, 1D, 2A, and 3B, RZ 04-10116 by Capkey Birmingham Partners LLC. This is Agenda Item Number 14155. First presentation was heard at the June 2, 2014 Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This slide shows the property in question outlined in red. The current zoning is a combination of AG1 and MIx mix. The original site plan was approved pursuant to 2004Z-116. And this was the plan back in 2004. This is the revised site plan that we're considering this evening, which was submitted on June 9, 2014. In terms of history and background, the subject site was rezoned from C1 Community Business and M1 Manufacturing to MIx Mixed Use on November 30, 2004 by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. This site is one corner of three corners of the Birmingham Crossroads that was zoned pursuant to RZ 04-116, which is the subject site, and RZ 04-43, which are the northeast and southeast corners of Zoned C1 Conditional. The final conditions approved for all three quadrants were derived from numerous meetings between the original developer, AG Armstrong, and the community using the Birmingham Crossroads Plan, which amended the 2015 North Fulton Comprehensive Plan, which was approved by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners on March 3, 2004. In addition, the Birmingham Crossroads of the Northwest Fulton Overlay District was approved on March 3, 2004. This newly created overlay also guided the ultimate outcome of what was approved for the three quadrants of Birmingham Crossroads. The central premise of both the plan and the overlay was that the Birmingham Crossroads should be a neighborhood node consisting of 27.1 acres, which at that time recommended up to 100,000 square feet of commercial uses, up to 100,000 square feet of office uses, and up to five residential units per acre. Since the time of the rezoning in 2004, the northeast and southwest quadrants have been developed as approved. The southeast quadrant has remained undeveloped, other than the existing structures on the 22.3 acres. The applicant has submitted a site plan that proposes to reduce the approved density for the office, commercial, retail, and eliminate the daycare facility along Birmingham Road. The applicant is proposing to replace some of the townhouse units previously developed with single-family detached homes. In addition, the applicant has indicated they will develop the property but will seek a home builder to build the residential portion and market the non-residential portion for future development. The applicants were present at the meeting as well, and I'm sorry, this is the CZIM meeting of May 27. The applicants were present at the meeting as well as nine members of the community who voiced the following concerns and issues regarding the proposed development. One, what will be the design of the homes on the site? Should there be specific types of designs and elevations for the development? And these should be included in the conditions of zoning. They wanted to ensure that the higher-density residential and non-residential be conditioned to the approximate 6.6 acres and not spill into the AG1 property to the south or the east. They suggested a more rural feel to the street pattern with granite curbing, gaslights, and an organic pattern to the landscaping. They asked that an internal pedestrian path system be provided that connects with Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road for subsequent connections to Birmingham Park to the northwest. The community also asked that the original conditions from 2004 be included in the current conditions. And these are the rezoning conditions that they're referring to here. Six, to confirm acreage for the MIx and the AG1 portion of the development. Seven, request that the AG1 parcel needs to be tied to current AG1 standards. Eight, request that the original agreement stating that the townhomes need to tie into their own community septic system should be restated here. Also, that the AG1 lots will be served by individual septic systems. To provide specimetry, inventory, and green coverage and specify what will be saved. They asked that the applicant work with GTC to provide buffers to the substation or a combination of the applicant and GTC to provide buffers. Would like the specifics of what type of detention facilities and what it they will look like. They expressed wanting Lou Oliver to be involved now and in the future if the developer sells to another builder. And thirteen, the citizens asked the applicant for another meeting to respond to the issues raised. Since the time of the CZIM, staff has met with the applicant, his engineer, and his designer, Lou Oliver, to discuss some of the issues voiced at the CZIM meeting. The applicant agreed to provide elevations and verbiage that would guide the architecture of the residential portion of the development in the future. The staff also agreed that the applicant would submit a revised site plan indicating various lot sizes for both the single-family residences and attached residences. The revised site plan submitted on June 9, 2014 indicates a minimum lot worth for single-family residences as 35 feet with a maximum of 50 feet, lots 1 through 16, and then lots 24 through 30. The attached townhouse residences indicate a minimum of 30 feet and a maximum of 45 feet, and these are shown on lots 17 through 23 in the site plan. Proposed modifications to conditions. The applicant wants to modify the existing conditions as follows: to add to no more than 33 townhouses, to add descendants and/or single-family dwelling units on the 6.63 acres within the southwest quadrant. In terms of the daycare facility, he wants to cancel that requirement. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the revised site plan, we are now making reference to the site plan dated May 7, 2014, as opposed to the older site plans, and updating this to the Community Development Department as opposed to Fulton To the owner's agreement, to the following, to require conformance with the Georgia Department of Transportation GDOT requirements as opposed to the specific conditions that were originally attached to the rezoning. After further evaluation of the site plan with original conditions approved pursuant to 2004Z-116 by Fulton County, staff has determined that the following condition has not been met. Staff also notes that there are two conditions, number 2D, and this is a typo from the Fulton County conditions. The condition that has not yet been met and which we have agreed with the applicant will be brought up at next month's meeting is that the current condition talks about a community park, community septic system, and residential development on 1-acre minimum lots on 13.587 acres outside the Birmingham Neighborhood Node within the southeast quadrant at the intersection of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road. Said acreage is to be zoned AG1. The applicant has not indicated that a new community septic system would be constructed within the southeast quadrant as well as a community park. Staff has suggested that this condition, 1D, be amended as requested by the applicant as a new zoning modification request to be heard by the mayor and city council on July 21, 2014. The applicant has agreed to the new zoning modification request to amend the above-mentioned conditions. And what this means essentially is that the original plan called for a separate community septic system. As you know, there is one with, by the Publix supermarket for that quadrant. And the plan calls for a separate one to serve the MIx area that we're under discussion tonight, which is that 6.63 area. The applicant wishes actually to use the Publix supermarkets, that quadrant's community septic system. And so to do that, he's going to have to get a modification to the 2004 zoning plan. So that is what he will be in, coming in for next month, is to be able to share the existing community septic system serving Publix in that quadrant as opposed to building a new one for his, for this southeast quadrant. Okay? Staff recommendations: to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows: to no more than 33 townhouses and/or single-family dwelling units on 6.63 acres within the southeast quadrant. Staff recommends the following development standards for the single-family detached lots to be included in the recommended conditions: a front yard setback of 10 feet, side yard setback a minimum of zero with 10 feet between buildings, rear yard setback 10 feet, minimum lot worth for detached dwellings 35, minimum lot frontage 35. Height, there should be a maximum height limit of two stories with a maximum height of 28 feet from average finished grade to the bottom of the roof eve. Unit shall be rear entry access via alleyways. Staff recommends the following development standards for the proposed townhouses be included in the recommended conditions: front yard setback 10 feet, rear yard setback 10 feet. Height, there should be a maximum height limit of two stories with a maximum height of 28 feet from average finished grade to the bottom of the roof eve. A minimum of 80% of common wall should be contiguous with each adjoining unit. Unit shall be rear entry access via alleyways. Based on the above analysis, staff recommends approval conditional to modify Condition 1C with the above stated conditions. To the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows, staff agrees to cancel out 1D. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the site plan dated, and this is the latest site plan we've included now, is June 9, 2014. Staff has recommended that a condition be included stating the following: at which time that 50% of the residential units are issued a certificate of occupancy. Those areas shown as commercial on the revised site plan submitted on June 9, 2014, a planting plan shall be provided to the city arborists to be approved for installation. The maintenance of the landscaping shall be the responsibility of the property owner of those commercial parcels. So what we're saying is that with 50% of the residential is completed, we want a planting plan to make sure that that vacant area that is slated to be commercial is landscaped. And that such time that 75% of the residential units are issued a certificate of occupancy, that those areas shown as commercial on the revised site plan shall commence construction. So we are tying a performance between residential units and at 75% of that performance time, we would then expect to see the commercial start. Staff recommends that proposed square footages be eliminated from the site plan, and any future development would be driven by the available room for parking within the 6.63 acres of MIx mixed-use. And what we're essentially saying here is that rather than putting specific square footages for commercial, retail, office, restaurant, that there, when one builds out the 33 housing units, whether they be townhomes or single-family or mix, the space that's left, which has been set aside for the mixed-use of resident, I'm sorry, of retail, office, or restaurant, that that be driven by the amount of parking spaces available. Because there is such a difference between requirements for parking for restaurants as opposed to requirements for parking for office. So that, in essence, we would be looking for this to be non-residential use, but the uses would require, obviously, the required amount of parking spaces to accommodate it. We thought that was a better way of doing it, rather than tying up a building for restaurant with all those parking spaces when really the market would say that that really might be a better use to be retail or something. So we essentially are backing in to those uses based on the parking requirements. The village green is recommended to be at least 50 feet wide and 13,000 square feet in area. Therefore, staff will include a condition that this area remain a village green as described above. Staff recommends that the site plan indicate future vehicular and pedestrian interparcell access to the C1 tract at the southeast corner of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road. At which time this parcel is developed, the village concept can be continued to the north and be consistent with the Birmingham Crossroads Plan. A recommended condition will be included to reflect this request. The site plan still does not indicate internal paths that would ultimately provide accessibility to Birmingham Park via the frontage on the west side of Birmingham Highway north of Hickory Flat Road. Therefore, staff will include a condition to include an internal path within the Etara Development, including the AG1 portion. The community staff and the applicant were in agreement to install granite curb throughout the development. The Public Works Department has revised the recommended conditions to reflect this change. To the owner's agreement, to the following site development consideration for townhouse units: to require conformance with the Georgia Department of Transportation GDOT requirements. And we took out the other language, which is the old language. To the, in terms of recommended conditions now, I'm going to list all the conditions that we would recommend go along with this zoning modification. To the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows: A and B, extra D through F, see Fulton County conditions attached. C, no more than 33 townhouses and/or single-family dwelling units on 6.63 acres within the southeast quadrant of the Birmingham Neighborhood Node at a maximum density of 4.98 units per acre, whichever is less. Above-described acreage shall be rezoned MIx mixed-use conditional. D is out. 2A, to the revised site plan dated June 9, 2014. And then I'm going to go down to, that's A, and then down to 2B, see Fulton County conditions attached. Three, to the owner's agreement, to the following: A and B, see Fulton County conditions attached. C, to require conformance with the Georgia Department of Transportation GDOT requirements. And then below, D and E, see Fulton County conditions attached. Recommended conditions continue here under townhomes: front yard setback shall be 10 feet, rear yard 10. Height, there should be a maximum height limit of two stories with a maximum height of 28 feet from the average finished grade to the bottom of the roof eve. Four, a minimum of 80% of common wall should be contiguous with each adjoining unit. Five units shall be rear entry by alleyways. Four, to the owner's agreement, to abide by the following: A through H, see Fulton County conditions attached. I dedicate at no cost to the City of Milton or Georgia Department of Transportation, provide to the approval of land disturbance permits, sufficient land as necessary to provide the following. And these are essentially from our Department of Transportation, provide at least 35 feet of right-of-way from the center line of SR 372 along the entire property frontage, ours may be required by GDOT. Provide bicycle and pedestrian improvements along entire property frontage of SR 372 Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road. Three, provide a 50-foot wide pedestrian easement free of any structures or above-ground utilities for future pedestrian interparcell access on the east property line on land, And one, access to site and installation modification of transportation. And 1, access to site and installation modification of transportation infrastructure shall meet City of Milton Code of Ordinances and Ashtoe Guidelines. I'm sorry, that was, I believe, so this is subset 1. Southbound left turn lane on SR 372 at New Access Drive. Subsection 2, west brown left turn lane on Birmingham Road. 3, eastbound deceleration lane on Birmingham Road. 4, entrance driveway shall provide a minimum of 100 feet or the 95% Q length, whichever is grade of uninterrupted access. 5, entrance improvements on Birmingham Road shall be directly across from public shopping center, existing driveway. K, cross parcel access to the adjacent commercial tract to the north should be provided through the commercial areas. Convert the public access right-of-way between the residential lots 17 to 30 to a private alley. L, eliminate the public right-of-way on all alleys. M, provide adequate site distance at all intersections, eliminate onsite parking as necessary. N, all street improvements shall extend across the entire street frontage. O, provide a minimum right-of-way of one foot behind the proposed sidewalk throughout the development. P, provide a minimum of four-inch granite curb on the typical section. 5, A through N, see Fulton County conditions attached. O, the stormwater management facility shall utilize earthen embankments where possible, walled structures are not encouraged. And then under that, subsection 1, side slopes for the stormwater management facility shall be no steeper than 4 to 1 unless otherwise approved by Public Works Director. P, owners shall be required to develop a stormwater management plan to maintain water quality and rate of runoff to protect neighboring persons and property from damage or loss. 6, to the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations: single-family detached lots shall provide front yard setback 10 feet, side yard setback, minimum zero feet with a 10-foot building separation. 3, rear yard setback 10 feet, minimum lot width 35 feet, minimum lot frontage 35 feet. Height, there should be a maximum height limit of two stories with a maximum height of 28 feet from average finished grade to the bottom of the roof eve. Unit shall be rear entry access via alleyways. At which time the 50% of the residential units are issued a certificate of occupancy, those areas shown as commercial on the revised site plan submitted on June 9, 2014, a planting plan shall be provided to the city arborist to be approved for installation. The maintenance of the landscaping shall be the responsibility of the property owner of those commercial parcels. At such time that 75% of the residential units are issued a certificate of occupancy, those areas shown as commercial on the revised site plan submitted on June 9th shall commence construction. C, provide a village green in the south side of Birmingham Road and west of the primary entrance off of Birmingham Road. It shall be a minimum of 50 feet in width and a minimum of 13,000 square feet in area. D, provide internal pedestrian trails within the MIX and AG1 districts to provide future connection with Birmingham Park. To the owner's agreement to the following architectural requirements for residential structures, and I have several pages of those, and let me just sort of touch on those very briefly, but they are certainly included as part of the conditions of zoning. Architectural elevation shall be reviewed and approved by the city architect prior to the issuance of a building permit. Under that, design and architecture shall be consistent with the attached illustrations elevations received by the community development department. B, single gable or hip roof, primary building mass with subordinate secondary mass, separate carriage house mass. C, design should be based on vernacular forms. D, row houses should be of uniform character and finish. E, porch elements should face streets. And under that, 1, porch elements may also be used within the rear yard. Front porch should have a wooden porch floor. Porch shall be a minimum of eight feet. Porch shall be on a majority of the front elevations. Porch shall be supported by 18 inches masonry piers. F, corner lot shall have side porches. G, windows and doors should be of vertical proportions. And under that, one pane should be of similar proportions. Front doors with side lights may be an exception. Windows must be of similar sizes. Transit windows are prohibited. Shutter shall be authentic. H, chimney should be expressed in brick external to the building. And subsection 1 under that, exterior trim shall be of local, I'm sorry, H, I, exterior trim shall be of local historic character. And under that, authentic flat casings, restoration sills, full two-times, corner boards, et cetera. Subsection 2, metal screen and slot vents are not allowed. J, wall finishes shall conform to the following: a fronting board and baton, flat panel materials with applied battens are not allowed. Wood mold brick of reddish-brown local historic color with little variation. Wall finishes on sides of buildings seen from Publix shall be the same on all sides. Typically, brick is used on commercial buildings and row houses, but is also acceptable on houses as approved by the architect. No more than three different exterior materials. K, poured concrete as a finish may be acceptable. L, roof should be gable with slopes from 6 to 12 to 10 to 12. Materials should be shake, wood shingle, et cetera. Gutters and downspouts to be one-half inch round. M, exterior light fixtures and door hardware may be industrial, rural in character. Landscape should be historic. Plant materials should be native. Hardscape materials include gravel, brick, crushed stone. Stone walls and picket-type fences should be randomly introduced. Prohibited materials and techniques, general EIFS, exterior insulation finishing systems, plastic GBs, grilles between glass, aluminum exterior, et cetera. P, stove pipes of adequate size are allowed. Materials on the same form shall not be varied. And then I've just put together a few of the elevations that we will be including as part of the conditions for the zoning modification. And it shows here the type of structures that we will be looking to see in this neighborhood note. And that, Mr. Mayor, is my presentation.
Okay. I'm assuming we've got some public comments, correct?
We do, sir.
Is there any question right now that anybody has for Kathy, or do you want to wait and listen to public comment and ask Kathy or that?
I just had one quick question. There are several places in here that we say, talk about brick with chimneys and with buildings themselves. But we have some historic stone houses here in Milton, too. So are we excluding stone from any of these houses? Or can we say brick or stone?
The applicant is, is going to bring that up, and they did bring that to our attention today, I believe, and, and they're going to be commenting on that very issue.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Sue, do us open up the public comment.
Our first comment comes from Joshua Scoggins.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Joshua Scoggins with the law firm of Lipscomb Johnson Sliester, Daley &amp; Smith. My address is 112 North Main Street, Cummings, Georgia 30040. Have the pleasure of being here tonight in front of you on behalf of Capkey Birmingham Partners LLC. Before I make my comment, because as Ms. Field showed you, this is an incredibly complex deal, I'd like to bring up Lou Oliver and Ken Wood, the engineer and architect for this project, and they are going to walk the, walk the council through, if you would permit me to do that. They can explain it far better than I can.
Kenneth Wood, 350 Research Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. Where can we set up the easels or on the, the side, okay? That everybody can still see them? So the property that's in question, as, as was stated earlier, is the 22.30 acres on the southeast quadrant of what we're looking at, with the 6.6 acres of the, of the mixed use. So it's important to note tonight, we're doing the modification of the conditions is what we're looking at doing. The, this is the existing site plan, so I wanted to bring this up because it's, it's very important to understand how the two comply with each other and how we got to where we are today. So if you're, if you're looking at the quadrant, this is the proposed daycare center that was down here up near the road on Birmingham Road. And one of the reasons we were asking for that to be taken out is that we didn't feel like in that area, it fit very well, the circulation, the safety, it was up against the, the power transforcer-stormer station, and so that was the reason that we were looking to get that taken out. As you came into the development, it's a, it's a similar road structure on the final site plan that we have. The townhomes were in this area, and the townhomes were also on this main street. And then they had the, the commercial area flanking the front part of this. And this plan was essentially 33 townhomes that was designed, and it had, it had enough commercial where if you actually laid out all the commercial and all the parking requirements, it would almost take up that whole 6.6 acres. So what we did is when Lauren came back to us and said, you know, let's take a, a look at it, and how can we, how can we make it better? And how can we make it a place where, you know, people can still have the horse farm up here, but they also can have a place where they can live that's low maintenance, it's a smaller yard, it's very upscale, very nice, and very walkable to Publix and the other shops that are up here. And so with that task, we started into the site plan. And the site plan's what you see on the sides here. So we have 30 of the townhomes and cluster single-family lots. And so these are, these are designed to be all rear-loaded lots. So when you drive down the street, you basically have a very street-friendly section where we'll have the, the standard streets, and we'll have the parking along the sides of the street on one of the sides. You'll have the street trees, the street lights, as we talked about, and then you'll have the front of the homes. And the idea was to have a, you know, a lot of front porches, a lot of, a lot of fencing, so that it really created a very neighborly place to look at and kind of honor, honor this little area. The commercial on the front, we took and looked at exactly how much square footage could we realistically fit into these areas and park? And so that's how we approached the site plan when you're looking at it. We put commercial retail up at the top. That has the parking that is behind it. All of the retail parking and commercial and, and restaurant and office parking has the parking located behind it. If you're looking on Birmingham Highway, which is the one, that's the Georgia DOT road, that commercial is designed so that you can come in, you can go left or right to either one of those. And if we had to designate, if we thought day one where our, our restaurant use would go, we, we considered that to be the most viable location. Also, looking at the site plans, as you transitioned back to the single-family, that's where we thought the, the location for the townhomes, and then transitioning back to the single-family would occur. Also, in looking, you know, at our road layout, what we're trying to encourage is, 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 you know, walkability and openability. I'm not sure, can you bring me this, this rendering? What we did in response to, when we had our CZIM meeting, is we were looking at a, you know, what is a really good trail network and layout for the trails and sidewalk systems? So all of our streets had side, have sidewalks on both sides. They have a landscape strip and sidewalks on each side of it. Then in addition, a lot, up along Birmingham Highway, the entire frontage is designed to the, the, more of the master plan and getting a larger sidewalk system up in the front so it can start that trail connection. We also are proposing coming off our main roundabout with a, a trail that would come down and then loop down by the stormwater management facility. And then if you kept coming down toward the open space, another loop trail that would loop down toward the creek area, and eventually, depending on the homeowners, you, you potentially could connect it all the way back through for there. Then if you go across the street, we looked at a little bit more of an elaborate system. You have a little bit more topography. That's where most of the more mature trees are on the site. We're, this loops through and ties. And what we'd like to negotiate, one of the neighbors made a good recommendation, is that we can work with the power company to actually get a connection back to the north for the trail system. The other recommendation that came out of, from Public Works today, almost enhances this vision even, even further of what we're looking at. If you come down to the end of the cul-de-sac, the 50-foot dedication for the future cross-trails project, I can't remember what it was called, but it's a, the, the 50-foot pedestrian access that would cross-country project, basically would be off of the end of this cul-de-sac, and it would come down to this property line and drop down, I believe, the south, the southeast entire corner is kind of where the vision for that trail would come out at. So we think that the two trail systems, as well as our sidewalk systems, that will link all of the commercial, all the way back over to Birmingham, and then all the way down to the south, will, will really be a great addition to that. And then I've got another plan, I believe it's on the back of that one.
I'll tell you what, is, is there any way you take one of those easels and the plans, as you've shown them when you're through, maybe turn it around so that if anybody wants to be able to see that?
Absolutely. So the one we just talked about was the trail plan, which is this one, so I'll set this where you can see the back of it.
Just as you're through with it, yeah, if you just put it there to show the folks and the audience can see if they're interested.
So on the, on that, the plan over there, what we looked at as well from the neighbors, and I'll describe it on this one, but I have it on the back of that plan, is, is what is the existing tree conditions? In addition to our internal arborist, Mark Law also went out to the site and investigated the, the trees as well. And the, the majority of the trees, there's a large contingency of trees on the back of the site. This is where we have our largest open space mass, and that's where you'll find the largest contingency of trees. This is more pasture. The whole upper part of the site either has buildings on it, or it's fairly cleared. It's, it's grown up, a lot of the underbrush now, but it's fairly cleared as it sits now. We do have some nice trees down here near the stormwater management facility, and so what we've committed to in the conditions, you know, beside the, the lower slopes to make more of an alternative pond, and, and, you know, I'll work with Carter to basically come up with a, you know, a very innovative pond design so that we can try to save some of those specimen trees. Because now that we see that they're a little bit north of our pond, we believe that we can situate the home closer to the rear alley for lot 1, closer to that section, and be able to save those trees that are up a little bit closer to Birmingham. And that is on one of the exhibits there. And so you'll see that cluster of trees on that lot 1. And so that lot 1 is big enough that we believe we can do that in between the pond. There's a couple of the larger trees that are actually down in the pond, and it's the lowest part of the side, and there are just, there's really not much we can do for the, for that section of the site on there. Another comment I just wanted to point out, too, this is our, on our master plan, this is our, the village green that was identified from Fulton County, carried forward. I measured it today, and I related it back to the Fulton County plan, and when I measure it, it's actually 11,500 square feet to the existing right-of-way. And we haven't, we haven't really changed the size of it or anything, so I think it might have just been misprinted from back in the day. But I just wanted to make sure that we got that right. A couple more things that, that has really come up is, a great idea from, from the community was that there was a successful project for Oglethorpe Power down the street that provided some screening to the power facility. We've intentionally left about a 15 to 20-foot gap so that we can buffer our site from them, but I, I know we'd love to work with Julie in, in the effort to have that happen because that would only further enhance our site as well. And so that's something we really want to look forward to in doing. The detention pond was another thing that came up. In the stipulations, you heard about the four feet. You know, our idea on this is, is to make it very rural, very, very country, and very low impact, obviously, from the conditions that you're seeing. And so our goal on the detention pond is really to make it more of a stormwater management area. You know, we believe we've got some smaller areas, especially with these AG1 lots, that we can treat some stormwater in the front yards.
Mayor, excuse me, 10 minutes has run, and we have four more public comment cards in support and one in opposition. And we have run 10 minutes.
I apologize, I was watching this clock and I didn't think you were running it.
That's fine, that's fine. You know, I'm okay, we got four more, I'm okay adding, say, five minutes. But if you keep that in mind, and we'll also add five minutes to the, anybody in opposition, but.
I'll turn it over to Lou Oliver to talk about the architecture.
We'll, we'll, keep in mind, after we close the public comment, council can still ask you questions, and you can clarify things if needed, but is council okay with five minutes on both sides? Okay?
Lou Oliver, 880 Marietta Highway, Roswell. Lou Oliver Incorporated. I am representing the architectural interest for the developer, and I looked at. I am representing the architectural interest for the developer, and I looked at a lot of local imagery, and I've studied it for years. I have put together a whole series of boards that are, that span architecture from Roswell all the way up to Delaniga, and identify the characteristics of all the forms. And it's really the intention of the developer to engage a builder who will understand this and engage the right designers to put it forward, along with Bob, who I think will be really instrumental in steering this. So I have these boards if anybody wants to see them or pass them around, the originals. The architecture should be very simple, very vernacular. There's a book I brought on James Mean's work, as we know, this exists between Crab Apple and Birmingham, one of his works. And more of his work is very typical of North Georgia, and it's very, very simple, very vernacular. I think we had some verbiage in there about ornament, which I'm personally hoping we don't have to do a lot of, because it's really not very typical of the area. There are, do I need to go through these conditions? No. Or the, some of the things that we're requesting to vary from staff's recommendation. There is this document that is a, what do we call this?
Mr. Mayor, I have tendered a memo to all copies, the council members, and basically what this document does is outline some proposed changes to staff's recommended conditions. All of our proposed changes are highlighted and covered track changes. We have actually spoken with Ms. Field and also with Mr. Lucas on a couple of these, and we are okay with leaving in Staff's Proposed Condition Number 4, with the exception of J, Romanet 4, and 4P. So we can leave that one mainly like it is. And then the other big condition that we would like to see removed is the requirement that 50% of this site, after 50% of the residential units are issued to CO, that we have to provide a plan to the city arborist, and then also we're limited and required to begin constructing the commercial when we reach 75% of the residential units. We feel that that requirement really is something that's going to cause Cap Key to have to build something there may not be a demand for. And I don't think it's in anyone's interest to build commercial that may be vacant, especially when there's a lot of vacancy in the Publix shopping center already. We would prefer to allow that demand to come naturally and just go ahead and grass the area and reserve it for the commercial. And then I'll let Lou speak to changes to the architecture.
I'm sorry, can you restate the ones that you're okay with to keep in, even though it was crossed out?
All of Condition Number 4, except J, subsection 4, and then P, which is the last subsection of that condition. Mr. Lucas was actually able to explain that to our, so that we understood it better, to be honest.
So, under the conditions, I'll respond to the architectural. Under 3J, we'd just like to clarify that rear entry access is for vehicles only, not front doors. Under 3G, rear yard setbacks, I would like to see us have zero setbacks, because we're on alleys, we're on 30-foot alleys at that, which is six feet bigger than savannas, which are also perfectly adequate. And what happens when you have a rear yard setback with a garage is you get vehicles, tricycles, and plastic play equipment parked in front of doors, and the scale of the alley actually competes with that of the street. So 3B has 24-to-30-foot alleys, Glenwood Park has 24-foot alleys, we have 30-foot alleys, and I think that it's perfectly acceptable to zero setback.
Respectfully, five minutes has run on the clock.
And again, we can certainly ask questions of the applicant. Is there anything else, though, to be fair to the applicant? Is there any other major points you need a little bit of time to?
I think that we should be allowed to do flush curbs.
But I'm, you know, another minute or two, can you get?
Yeah, another minute.
Is my council okay with adding a minute, two minutes to both sides?
And Mr. Mayor, just to make a point, I think that the last public comment in support is actually the applicant's principle, and he does need to speak.
Which would be who, sir?
Mr. Lauren Winpott.
Okay, so then we would still have two public comments besides?
Okay, we're gonna add two minutes to both sides for a total of 17. Okay, go ahead.
6A, we would request to do minimum lot widths of 30 feet for single-family residential. The Village Green, I will let Ken speak to that. Under 7B, we would like to add the verbiage with the possibility of a subordinate secondary mass and/or a separate carriage house mass. All forms don't have to be secondary, they can be just primary. Let's see, corner, excuse me, 7F corner lots shall have side porches, or be designed with recesses and projections. Under H, chimneys should be expressed in brick or stone, or stone is added. Under I, metal screens and slots are not allowed, we would like to strike that, and just put all exterior ventilation materials should comply with the architectural period theme for the development. We would like to allow asphalt shingle roofs under L, and then it should be gutters and downspouts, half-round and round, I believe the developer would like to strike that. Also, materials on the same form shall not be varied, we would like to strike that.
Okay. All right. We have another speaker?
We do, Ms. Julie Zoner Bailey. We have 25 seconds remaining.
I'm sure she can get it all, right?
Good evening. A question, just in terms of how this evening's kind of played out. My intent is to speak in favor of this zoning modification, but given there's 25 seconds, and given there's some new information that's been brought forward in terms of questions about some of staff's recommendations, I think several of us want to speak in favor, but we do have some statements about the conditions that would take more than 25 seconds. So with all due respect to the applicant and to this process, a suggestion would be that some of the 10 minutes that would normally be set aside for those in opposition, if maybe we carve that out for a third category that just says "public comment," and allow us to make our public comment in support, but have an adequate time to speak to the things with the, excuse me, within the conditions that are necessary for public comment.
You know, in all reality, I don't, we have, how many in opposition?
We have one in opposition, sir.
Okay, you know, if, one way or the other, if we add some more time for approval and add that in opposition, probably not going to use all the time in opposition, so it's the same amount of time, so I'd probably rather just keep it. If the council's okay, you know what, I'm gonna stretch and go another five minutes if the council's okay with that, and then we'll add that to the opposition, knowing that we probably won't have that long in opposition. There may be some time left.
How many, how many other speakers do we have?
We have one more after...
One more, so?
Yes, and then I have one to read in the record.
So, are you guys okay with that, five minutes? Okay, so we'll add five minutes for a couple, 23 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and just as a point of clarification, I think the applicant, just so that we kind of have a sense of how much time has already been expended, probably like 20, how much time has already been?
17.
17.
17 so far, so we'll have five minutes.
Okay, so just out of consideration, I'll go quick, but we do, it is important, obviously, to the community, so thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I live at 255 Hickory Flat Road in Milton, Georgia, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to address the council and mayor this evening. I do support staff's recommendations for the approval conditional for the four zoning modifications identified under ZM 1403, 1C, 1D, 2A, and 3B. We appreciate so much staff's work and the applicant's on this case to ensure that the zoning modifications are consistent with the original intent of the Birmingham Crossroads' master plan, the original zoning conditions of 2004, as well as all agreements reached originally with the underlying owner of the parcel and the adjacent landowners. And for the record, I believe that Mr. Gerard has a copy of that private agreement, and we would ask that consideration of both the original 2004 conditions, as well as that private agreement, carry forward with this in some form or fashion. Each condition set forth by staff and as enumerated by Mrs. Fields is critical and very important to the adherence, intent, and vision of the Birmingham Crossroads. We request that, should you approve these zoning modifications this evening, that you do so with all of staff's recommendations and the conditions as they put forward as fully intact. Each condition is important to the community and how this area looks and feels now and into the future. As you consider this case this evening, we would ask for several points of clarification. It was noted by staff that in July, an additional zoning modification would come forward, dealing with the community septic. We just want to clarify this evening, as part of your zoning modification consideration, that in July, it would be to expressly say that the eight AG1 landlots that are part of the proposed site plan, that those would be served by individual septic systems, and I believe that that was the intent of the applicant. However, I did hear this evening for the first time that there might be included in that request that the 6.63 acres be served by the community septic on the northeast quadrant. So I think some clarity on that would be important. We want to make sure that the capacity that is existing for the landowners on the southwest corner, that their rights are vested, and so the capacity of that community septic system could be an issue. An issue this evening, I think, is to make sure that we clarify that the eight AG1 lots will be served on individual septic. I recognize that that's coming forward in July. A little unusual that these are separated, and it's not all together, so we ask for that consideration. Secondly, we would, we do understand that the original conditions for 2004 rezoning, it was alluded to, we just want to clarify that those conditions are formally attached to whatever would be approved this evening, if nothing else, so that we have a singular document, even if it includes the 2004, so that it's all in one place, if you will. With regards to acknowledgement of the private agreement that was in place in 2004 between AG Armstrong and adjacent landowners, that was adopted and spread onto the minutes for Fulton County, so we would ask that in some form or fashion, acknowledgement of that private agreement be considered this evening, because it was always the intent of the community that that private agreement would carry forward with this parcel. And so I don't think there's an issue there, I think it's just a function of acknowledging that private agreement and the contents within. Regarding tree save, tonight's the first time that we've had any specificity regarding specimen trees. We recognize that staff has recommended specimen tree save to be identified at the time of land disturbance. What we would ask is that because there's going to be a July zoning modification, that rather than wait to the land disturbance, because there's now the detail that could be brought forward, that perhaps we have more specificity between now and July, and that the zoning modification in July would also incorporate some specifics about specimen trees. I think we all would agree, as a tree save city, or as a tree city, we want to do the best job possible, and I think we heard some great things from the applicant and from the folks working with them, but the more specific we could be, I think the better for our rural environment, so we would appreciate consideration of that. Another item that I don't know was expressly identified, and that is just the adherence to the night sky ordinance. The night sky ordinance, it's important, it's part of our rural heritage, especially out in the Birmingham and northwest area. We would ask that you make reference to the night sky ordinance and its applicability for this particular portion of the parcel, and staff may be able to address that it already is, we just didn't hear express reference to that. So the night sky ordinance and its applicability would be appreciated. I think it's important to emphasize that staff's recommendation for the 50% for landscaping and then the 75% as it relates to stage development, that's really important, because there's a risk if this gets approved with the intent of residential and commercial, and yet there's no, there's nothing that really requires the applicant to pursue that. So the community feels strongly that staff's recommendations are very important.
Five minutes has run on the clock.
And there's one other speaker.
I'm...
I'm almost done.
I'll leave it at that.
Five minutes is fine.
He was okay.
We've come this far, let's keep going.
There's a lot of history here, so it's, we're trying to be as expeditious with our comments as we can be.
You know, I'm okay adding a couple of minutes, and then we'll wrap it up.
Right.
Yeah, two, let's say two now, and the next speaker, we need to give at least three minutes, too.
For the other person.
Yeah.
Thank you for consideration, Council. So the other thing that, again, because tonight was the first time that we heard it, was the removal of any commercial square footage. I would just ask that we, if we're not going to have the site's specific reference to, you know, 5,000 or 7,000-square-foot commercial structures, that we at least have some parameters so that a commercial structure couldn't come back and be larger than was ever intended. So I would ask that as part of tonight's zoning conditions, that you would look at the site plan that was submitted by the applicant, and at least use the largest building as the maximum-size commercial building. They could always come back for another zoning modification if that were different, but to leave it completely open when what had been presented to us at the CZIM identified specific sites and specific square footage, to remove that entirely might seem to present some risk that would not be as acceptable to the citizens. So I would ask that you at least consider having a maximum for the commercial that was commensurate with what they put forward on their site plan. I think that's primarily it. Again, we support this, we support all the work of staff and the applicant, but we do believe that the staff's recommendations for conditions are critical. They've done a phenomenal job trying to ensure that this is commensurate with the original intent. We appreciate your consideration and are available for any questions as you go about discussing this this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
Our last public comment, we've got 3 minutes and 35 seconds on the clock, comes from Curtis Mills.
Can you, can you hear me? I've never had to raise a microphone to speak into it before, so. I am Curtis Mills, I live at 16355 Birmingham Highway, which is about exactly a mile north of the crossroads on Birmingham Highway. My, my place of business is building 400 at the crossroads, which up until the 1930s was called the Old Birmingham Hotel, was built in about 1860. You all know the history, also called the Newton House. And I also own the Old Bice's store, which is the six and a half or so acres on the northwest corner. Anyway, so I have some interest and probably some standing, and I'll try to keep this to 20 minutes. Is that what I?
28.
What do I have? I'll time-box it.
I think we have three...
You have 2 minutes and 33 seconds.
All right, I had two requests and a couple of comments, and I'll cut the comments off if I run out of time. Request, it's important to me, without a lot of science behind this, that we eventually have a four-corner commercial solution at the crossroads. I think it becomes a more balanced destination in the long run. What that would look like, I don't know, but the idea of, an earlier idea was zero commercial, and all residential seemed to chop up the corners a good bit. So I like the fact that the commercial's in there. My request is recognizing that timing is everything, and as long as there's a glut of commercial space on the northeast corner, it hardly makes sense to make someone build space that's going to be vacant. It's a matter of timing. And my request, I like a lot what staff did to trigger future development. I mean, I think the concept is a good one. Whether the timing is right, I don't know, but I would request that somehow or other we ensure that there will be that commercial space built out. My other comment, as you all probably know better than me, Lou Oliver has been involved in our area for many, many years, and I take a lot of comfort in his involvement with any project, and I would just like to see that either the renderings that he's done, the elevations, whatever you... the elevations, whatever you want to call them, survive ownership, developer, and eventually are implemented, and I think that that will be well-served in the end. Couple of quick comments. The daycare facility, I talked with Doug McCurry, Doug and Sharner were the two signers of the side agreement with AG Armstrong this past weekend, and you all may know, they live right next to the Bices Store building. But he, he commented that the only reason the daycare facility had made it into the agreement is because Alan Goins really wanted a standalone restaurant, and everyone, I guess, in the community was against that, and he said, "Okay, how about a daycare center?" And it ended up in there. There wasn't a lot of thought that went in. So, with 10 seconds left, I just wanted to applaud this process. I think it worked well. We lost an inappropriate request, and I think with the right conditions, have an appropriate one, and I really wanted to thank staff for being responsive to what I know is a bunch of tedious requests from a lot of us, and just wanted to say thank you on that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that's our comments in approval now. We've got, what, 20?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven minutes left.
Minutes for opposition.
Opposition, if, if, if it needs to be, or wants to be. Okay, if, we can now hear from those that are opposed to this application.
That would be Mr. Ross Buckley.
Twenty-seven minutes, I think, for approval.
Can you order a pizza, please?
Good evening, Ross Buckley, 1166 Bream Drive, Milton. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you folks. I don't think I'm going to be more than three to five minutes. I'll try to be succinct in what I have to say. I had the opportunity seven years ago, I was living in Orlando, Florida with my family, to relocate to Atlanta for a job north perimeter, by perimeter mall, and I'd started to talk to some of the people I knew, I said, "Hey, where do I want to live? I can live anywhere within reason to commute down to the perimeter." And I had a boss that lived up 400, he said, "Well, you definitely want to be up the 400 corridor." He said, "You definitely want to stay west of 400, better property values, less congestion, less urban sprawl." So, I started to sniff from Dunwoody to Roswell to Alpharetta, actually went to Coming, but that was just a little bit too far north, and I stumbled across Milton, which, having moved in seven years ago, you guys know, that was right about the time the city was born. Started to look at the website, saw this whole one-acre zoning deal, saw the pastoral style of living people had here, the horse country. I grew up in Connecticut, it was very much like home to me, except a little bit more humidity. So, I started to house hunt in earnest, and I purchased a home at Bream Ridge, which is one-half mile north of the crossroads that we're discussing here. I understand that this plan was originally approved in '04, and I think the city grandfathered it in, in '06, if my info was correct, as it was at that point in time. I understand it's mixed commercial, multi-unit, one-acre zoning. I do have some neighbors with me, I'm not speaking on their behalf, obviously. Most of the guys and gals in my neighborhood travel for a living. I got lucky, I was home this week, otherwise, I'd have a much bigger pile of people sitting behind me. I don't think anyone has an issue with the commercial. Now, I understand there's a lot of unrented space around Publix, I certainly wouldn't want to build a building and have it sit vacant, because God knows, there's enough of that going on already around Publix. I don't think any of us have an issue with the one-acre zoning, the AG1 portion. Heck, I don't expect to be the last guy to build a house in this city and tell everyone else, "No, you can't come." I don't expect that. The, the main issue that I have is with the multi-unit. The terms cluster is a good word for this, I like that word. The 30, it's up to 33 now, that's more than I recall when I just had a presentation here a couple of weeks ago. But to have to talk about alleys and 10-foot offsets, building to building, is just, is just crazy. No one in their right mind lives in this town if they have to commute down the perimeter. Who is going to get in their car and drive an hour on a good day, 25 miles, to get all the way down to perimeter, come all the way back up here, unless there's something special about where we live? You guys know that, I don't need to tell you that. If we wanted multi-unit housing, I would have saved myself a 30-minute commute and gone down, down the road here a little bit. Anyway, my three issues, very quickly, multi-unit, traffic, and sewer. I just talked a little bit about the multi-unit component, the concern there. Traffic, I had asked the developer when I was here a couple of weeks ago, when there was a presentation about a traffic plan, they didn't have one from '04, they didn't have one updated, or weren't able to share it with me at that point. I've been researching the heck out of this, I don't need to tell you all the road projects going on around here. The rotary that just went over on, was it Hopewell? The rotary that they're just finishing up, the work going on down 372, that they're almost done there. As you guys know, that's going to free up all this roadway, and it's just going to send more cars to the intersection here. My wife brings my two kids to Birmingham Elementary every morning. On a good day, it's 20 minutes to go two miles. Now, I know we can't shut the roads down and stop other people from using us as a shortcut to the cheap real estate north and west of here, that's the nature of where we live up in this corner, I get that, it's okay, that's the way it works. We're just hoping not to have to add another 60 or 80 cars every morning, every afternoon, which 33 houses plus is going to do. One thing that concerns me, I heard them brought up real quickly, and I kind of felt this a little bit during the prior presentation, is they want to get these houses built, but nah, we'll do the corp, we'll do the commercial stuff later, and that AG1 is way down the road, so what we're going to have is these houses all jammed tight, sitting in the cornfield here for who knows how long, until demand reaches where people say, "Hey, that's smart, let's build some commercial space here." So, that was a concern. So, I would like to ask if we get a traffic plan, just to understand. I know there's been discussion about that intersection, forgive me if I don't have the detail, if it's gone beyond this, but I don't think there is a plan yet. I don't know if we're going to end up with the rotary in front of the cell tower, what's going to happen, but I think whatever we're going to do to fix this area, it's got to be inclusive to what approval is done for this development that we're talking about. And finally, the sewer, I had no idea there was a sewer plant behind Publix. It's very well-hidden, you walk up there, it's fenced, it's treated, they did a great job. You got to do a Google Earth to actually see the thing. I actually stopped in Publix today, spoke to the manager there, and asked her, "Hey, who runs this thing, who manages it?" Because I was just trying to get a feel for capacity, and the reason I ask that is the thing stinks, literally. It's not out of the ordinary, especially in heavy rain, to have a very strong smell of sewer. My one neighbor who wasn't able to make it tonight, her home is 1,100 feet away as a crow flies, from that holding tank to her home on the cul-de-sac in Bream Ridge. She said she doesn't smell it there, but if this thing is allegedly under capacity now, and it can handle this additional infrastructure, additional buildings, 33 houses times, what, two toilets each, add it up, we're concerned about capacity. It's bad enough, it smells already when you're in the parking lot there at Publix, so I wanted to add that, too. I've heard the developers saying, and I know that there's some support from some folks in the community, that this is a really good thing, to do this, that people want to have a smaller house, less maintenance. Trust me, I'm 70, 80 minutes an hour a week cutting my grass, it's a lot of work. I enjoy it, I chose that. No sane person is going to drive all the way up here to be in the type of house that they can get down in Roswell, down in Alpharetta, et cetera. Our big fear is, people are going to buy these on speculation, they're going to end up being rental units, and we're going to get that whole kind of deal going on there, which we would really, really like to avoid. So, in closing, I just want to say thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and whatever, whatever impact my thoughts have, if you have any clarifying questions you want to ask, let me know. But the multi-unit, we're concerned about that's going to do to property value. Honestly, guys, I wouldn't have bought here if I'd known that, and I'm mad at myself for not checking out the vacant land there before I bought, because obviously, this has been in place and so forth. The traffic, concerns about the traffic, and of course, the sewer, what I think might be a capacity issue with that existing plant. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, do you have any more public comment?
I have one to read into the record. This comes from Jim Bell at 1060 Birmingham Road, Milton, and Laura Renter at 1050 Birmingham Road, Milton, Georgia.
Can you clarify, so are these in for opposition or for support?
This is in support.
Okay. Is that okay, Candace? Okay.
Jim Bell and I live at 1060 and 1050 Birmingham Road, respectively, less than one mile from Birmingham Corners. Please note, the proposed new development at the southeast corner of Birmingham Corners will have a very direct effect on us as neighbors. After careful comparison of the prior mixed-use development plan and the revised development plan, we have decided that we support the revised plan for the following reasons. One, we recognize that the current mixed-use zoning allows for townhomes to be built with a density of up to 33 units on this site, in addition to a large daycare facility. The variances allow for cottage-style homes to be built with a density of 29 units. We believe that any proposed decrease in density for the new development is a positive step for the congested area. Second, in addition, we support the proposed cottage bungalow-style homes, as they are much more attractive and appropriate in style for the location than townhome-style buildings. Third, we believe that the size of the homes and style of living will be appealing to many couples and families in the area who would like to downsize, but have few options to do so. And fourth, we understand the package septic unit behind the Publix was designed to be used with all the mixed-use buildings on the southeast corner. Thus, we are not concerned about its increased use. Others have complained of odor from the unit, we have not noticed an odor, except on very rare occasions when it needs to be serviced. In addition, we would like to point out that these units are commonly used, and they are approved by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, they are used successfully nationwide, and approved by the EPA with no significant reported problems. In conclusions, as residents, we wish that we could control all current and future development in Milton. However, we acknowledge that legally, this is not possible due to city zoning and property owner rights. We encourage the community to look at conservation options, as proposed by Preserve Rural Milton, to address concerns about rapidly increasing population, congestion, and loss of rural character. Laura Renter and Jim Bell.
Okay. And if that's all our public comment, I will close the public hearing. What I will do is open it back up for the council for questions, clarifications, both to staff, the applicant, as we move forward.
I do like, I would like to make an announcement before we start, and that's the fact that the U.S. has beaten Ghana tonight, and two to one, in their first World Cup game, so.
Okay. Bert, go ahead.
Of the 33 townhomes/s único family, how many of those could you, I know it's in here, I can't quite find it, how many of those are townhomes, and how many of them are detached, single-family?
On the current site plan that we have...
On the nine, six-nine, isn't that the most current?
The, the current site plan is 30, the units that are, that are on there, and right now, what we're looking at is, we have seven of the homes that are facing the commercial that we drew as more of a townhome style, and the other 23 is detached.
Could you just point to those seven real quick for me? So, those are the only ones that you're calling townhomes, the rest of them are single-family detached?
That's what, that's how we think the market would react, it could be all single-family detached, but we think that with the, being the proximity to that commercial, that it might be a good fit for the towns to be there.
Okay, and can I just add some?
Sure, Bert, go ahead.
I don't know who to address this, and it's probably under Fulton County's purview at this point, but as far as capacity at the, at the, at the Publix facility, how can we verify that, or can we?
Yes, we can verify it, we can, you know, we're, we're coming back up for the modification next month, and we can bring in the calculations from, from the owner, AG Armstrong.
But you've seen those, I mean, your current comfortable is at least at this point, but you can bring those back in July.
We are, yes, especially with the reduction in the commercial.
Okay. As far as, one of the comments was about the night sky ordinance, that, that's, that's in force, whether it's stated or not, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I guess the other question has more for, for our staff, is the, it seemed a little new to me, maybe it's not, but the, the triggering mechanism of the 50% and then the 75% to build, start building the commercial, can you give me a little?
Yeah, and, and those were arbitrary numbers, but we wanted to tie it to some type of performance, and so, we, we thought that at the very least, there should be a landscaping requirement, so we're not looking at, at a dirt lot at some point in time, and we chose 50%. And then, we felt at some point in time, that we needed some leverage to ensure that the commercial, as proposed on the site plan, was indeed developed, and if we allowed all the residential to be developed without some type of performance standard, and we chose at a 75% level, that we may, we may lose that leverage. And so, it was, staff's thought that we would put in a performance percentage.
I personally don't, I, I kind of like the idea of having a landscape plan at some trigger point, where it doesn't look like a, like you say, even if it's grass, like some other places we have around town that's developed up front and not in the back. I do have a little heartburn over saying, "At X, you need to start building Y," especially when there's more Y across the street, so just want to bring that up, maybe for our consideration and discussion.
I agree with you for all that aspect, because I'd rather see a well-landscaped vacant lot there than a empty building for years.
And would, would they not have to come back for a zoning modification if it was going to be something other than commercial?
Oh, sure.
Anyway, so, I mean, we do have that, it's not automatically going to be built out. And I guess the other comment we had, you know, talking about, and I understand what the developers' thoughts of, of not saying we're going to have building X at 3,500 square feet Y, and this, that, and the other, it would be constrained by parking, so we do have some constraints there, but could we perhaps, like was mentioned, you know, say, with a maximum single building of X amount of square feet, whatever, what looks like the most southern, southern one there, south, is that western? Look like, I mean, it kind of looks like it's the largest, largest single building on there.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, I, I probably, well, first of all, I should say that I, I'm Laura Wimfong, I'm the developer, 5 Concourse Parkway, Atlanta, 30328. Hello. As far as this one goes, I think it was the staff's idea, it was Robyn's idea, to take the square footage off, because they're just pieces of a puzzle that move around. We used to have the big, the big zoning condition on how much you could have, we're never going to get there, we're never going to get there. In terms of a minimum or a maximum, I mean, if we want to put a maximum on there, that's fine, too. I think it really is going to depend on, when the commercial comes, how much parking does it need, how much can we fit, and we're going to play with those pieces of the puzzle.
Sure, I understand, I understand that, but I would, you know, if there's a, one of those larger buildings has a square footage on it, maybe we could at least just say...
Yeah, I, I think the way we have it envisioned is, we have the max, we have a maximum of 22,250 on the plan.
Total?
Among the four.
Okay. What's the largest single building on there?
8,500 on the piece on Birmingham Road, on highway. That's a, that's a, that's a good restaurant size, we've got to figure out parking, but that's a good restaurant size.
So, I mean, is that something you could, you know, no single building to exceed 8,500?
That'd be fine, yeah.
Okay. I thought like that, but no.
The only thing I would say on that, and again, not necessarily from your perspective, but also from the city, because I think we all gain if it's a productive and, and successful property, so I'm asking the question, would limiting a size on a building, rather maybe, maybe have the maximum square footage total, but if we limit the size of one at 8,500 square feet, could that, you know, impact the property negatively in the overall design? Let's say, you know, you had a tenant, or a user, or a buyer for commercial property that had something that would be really great for the area, that everybody embraced, but needed 10,000 feet, you know, that'd be my only concern, is...
You may get, you may get a guy who's got just a, he says, "My floor plan's 10,000, you can't do 10,000 today, you got to do another modification, I can't wait," and you're dead.
I mean, I could either look at, I mean, personally, as one up here, either a bay limit on one building, or you've got four drawn on there, at 20, whatever you said, 22,000 some odd square feet over four buildings.
I think that would probably work better for us, if that's something you guys could work with.
Total square footage.
Okay.
I would think, yeah, but...
That's all I have, so, right.
And I would, you know, I'll reiterate, and I have always said this, I totally respect and get where staff comes up with having the stipulation on doing the commercial, and I think you're, you're saying the right thing, you've got the right thing in there, but I do think in the, in the reality, and I know from my business, commercial always follows residential, and at some point, and right now, as we know, I think we would do a disservice to the whole area if we, if we forced the advocate to start commercial over there. You know, my vision would be, you do the residential, that's going to kind of fuel some of the other commercial that's in the area, and then... commercial that's in the area, and then once it gets going, then it's gonna bring a need for the commercial there. So as a couple of folks have already mentioned, I, you know, again, we do have the carrot or the stick or whatever that those areas are zoned commercial, so at some point you'll have to do them, but I certainly would be in favor of not specifying a time, because as I've said many times, if, you know, I've been on both sides of the table, and I, I think if we sit up here and give too many stipulations on how someone should run their business or, or design their property, then we also need to take some responsibility that they would be successful, in which we can't do that, so just wanna make that point there. Rick, you have.
Yeah, Kathy, just a question, the areas that are designated commercial today, if we pass this, as staff has put it, does, does it force them, if someone wanted to downzone and said, we wanna make this residential, is it worded so that they would have to come back before council?
They would, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just make a caveat to that? The total residential units is thirty-three units, aside from the AG one, one-acre lots. So they were already up to thirty. Reality is that they're not gonna get very much more residential, the remainder's really gonna be non-residential. So just to keep that in mind, the zoning conditions from Fulton County only allow up to thirty-three units, and they're amending it to say either townhome or single-family, aside from the AG one, that, you have to keep that a little separate.
But, but to answer your question, they can't build any more than thirty-three, the rest has to be the, the, the commercial area.
Or modified.
Or they have to come in for a new modification.
But can, could they theoretically, let's say they go with thirty, we're using hypotheticals because it's not built, they went with thirty in that existing area, my concern, I guess, trying to preserve and say we want commercial on that corner, on the four corners, I wouldn't wanna see that part saying, well, we still have three more, so we'll downzone, and now we're gonna build out these lots. Is there a way to protect against that so it would come back before us in the areas that are designated commercial today?
Ken, maybe you.
Not, not in a way that would prevent a future council from, from changing it, if that's, if that's your.
No, no, my, my, I guess my concern is if we approve this with, with the designation, with the maximum number, and we've got some designated commercial, the concern would be if, let's say they, they don't build as many residential, what I would hate to see is automatically the ability to just encroach where it's supposed to be commercial and that become residential, even if it's three units.
I don't think they could do that.
And the site plan is specific to?
The property, or the zoning's specific on that, the lines.
That's what I'm asking, because we've seen, with Fulton County, we've seen the opposite of that happen. People get it zoned commercial, and then they come back, and then they just dump additional residential without having to come forward to the council. That's, I guess, what I'm trying to avoid with my questions, trying to make sure we protect against that.
In order to change it, it'd have to come back to us or a future council.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm asking, okay.
You know, we're, I mean, I'm in favor of this project and this application, I guess the question, I'm gonna ask staff and Ken and all, it looks like we've got both from, from the applicant and the attorney versus staff recommendations, we've got a few differences there. Would the most efficient and realistic way to be to kinda try to go through possibly the applicants where he said, you know, they've said, we, we agree with this except for this, should, you know, is that the most reasonable way to go through that and just kinda check off, or?
Probably, Mr. Man.
Agree or not agree, I mean, I know we could keep talking about this forever.
As the applicant's agent was trying to go through them, I, we tried to write them down, there's not that, there's not that many of them, candidly, that were.
Couple of them I would have, wanna talk to our architect, too, and just ask his opinion.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm gonna suggest, maybe we just kinda go through and, you know, see if, and we may agree or disagree on them, but let's.
I'm cool with that.
Let's see, I guess we'd let the, I'll ask the applicant and as well as our staff to address the, the issues that staff and the applicant have not come to terms on or the, the differences. Throw that monkey on your back.
Okay, why don't you start and leave a comment?
Mr. Mayor, Josh Skoggins, again, condition one, we're leaving exactly the way staff has it. I tried to basically put their conditions in there, and then only change items that are in color. Two is also left, as is. Three, we're asking for subsection F of three to allow porches to encroach into the front yard setback, and then the rear yard setback, as Mr. Oliver explained, to be, to be zero, because we are actually not backing up to right-of-way, we're backing up to private alleys that are gonna be owned by the homeowners association.
And I'd like to interrupt on that, I have a specific question for Bob on that. I've seen properties with back alleys like that and just haven't been that impressed with it, I wanna make sure it's a good product, and Bob, wanna give your permission to, your thoughts on it.
I prefer to have the ten-foot setback.
Okay.
For both the rear and the front yard, to me, the front yard is, I feel like we have to have a ten-foot setback, and, I mean, or else you could have a front porch that literally could be a foot on the sidewalk. But the backyard, do we, you really feel like we have to keep a ten-foot, or would we, could we go down into a smaller setback than the ten-foot in the rear?
And I, I, yeah, I, I kinda would agree on that, too, I, I appreciate everybody's and Bob's, but I can see where the old look trying to have, if you got a huge back setback in the front, all of a sudden it's to be a spread-out neighborhood versus the quaint alley and the garage built right back there, you know? So I, I'd be in favor of a smaller buffer, if not zero, as, as the applicant would like, but that's my opinion.
I guess so. Mr. Oliver, can you explain maybe more of the reasoning?
Yeah, I, I do everything from really a historic precedent and scale approach. If you look at Savannah, it's twenty-four feet face-to-face on back alley garage buildings and service buildings. Glenwood Park is twenty-four feet, highly successful. Go to Amelia Park in Florida and see what a fifty-foot face-to-face on garages look like, looks like, it looks like an auto slum. And you will get complete, the alley filled up completely with junk and cars parked in front of doors. And I've done this for twenty-five years, practiced new urbanism for twenty-five years in planning, and I've seen the mistakes, and I've made them myself many, many times over. Front porches encroaching into the ten-foot setback go into downtown Delonaga, and you're gonna see two-foot setbacks on porches. And people think it's the most charming place in North Georgia. And really, when you look at the historic pattern and the communication between the front porch and the sidewalk, it's like incredible. Clark's Grove in Covington, which I worked on for many years, we have porches within four feet of sidewalks. Again, it's highly successful, it commands market rates of forty percent above the competition anywhere around it. Same thing with Saranby. Saranby has many instances of zero to two-foot setbacks on front porches. It is getting market premiums of eighty to a hundred percent greater than any of its competition, so.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the front porch encroachment, because we have that now in our form-based code, and it's been very successful, and I'm encouraging front porches, I'm encouraging side porches on all of these conditions, so that, that portion I didn't have a problem with. I was just saying that it should be a front, ten-foot front setback to the main building.
But again, and in all due respect, that was what I was mentioning of, I could see an issue, I, I mean, I see Mr. Oliver's point with the zero setback, as long, or not zero, but with the twenty-four alley or whatever.
On the rear, yeah.
On the rear.
On the rear side, yes.
I don't know if counsel.
I have one question, why do we have to have thirty feet in, for the alleys rather than the twenty-four feet?
Because you have to do a three-point turn with the twenty-four foot.
You have to, you have.
Rosemary Beach has twenty-four feet, Vickery has thirty, and thirty is slightly more marketable. The people with SUVs really will complain way too much with twenty-four-foot alleys.
Rick? And I guess again, Mr. Oliver, what, what you're saying is, by not having the setback, essentially, you're not given additional space where people can put junk that's kinda like part of their driveway, per se, versus it's an alley and you go into your residence.
Yes, you can, you can, if you want a third-vehicle parking space, you generally pull between the garages, not in front of the doors, and it's, and it's a lot, lot nicer.
And Bob, I guess the, the question I've got for you, so you're saying you're okay with the encroachment, or you've seen that, and I understand what you were saying, is there a recommendation of encroachment no less than in front of the sidewalk? So you put a limit?
Normally, the encroachment is up to fifty percent of the setback, so it's.
We're keeping the main building ten feet back, just allowing.
The encro, the encro, porches to encroach, usually we do an encroachment of about fifty percent of the front setback, so that would be a five-foot encroachment.
Five-foot encroachment, but there's, I think in there, did I read that porches need to be at least a minimum of eight feet wide? So we actually have a usable porch versus decorative porch?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so the rear yard setback here, where instead of going to none, I mean, the front yard setback, instead of being ten feet, it would be ten feet, but provided porches may encroach up to five feet? Is that what you're saying? Front yard setback of ten feet, provided porches may encroach up to five feet?
Yes.
And I guess, Ms. Oliver, what's your, your comment?
Um, this would require that the front facade be moved back from the front setback line, which legalistically you can do anyway, unless you have a front facade zone.
So you're saying you don't see that as an issue if you wanted to have a porch and we still left five feet?
Not really, you just push the facade back.
Okay, how about on the, going back to the rear, the rear setback? Bob, can you get comfortable with the applicant's thoughts on that? Does counsel?
If you go zero, we'll make it work.
Counsel?
Bob can be comfortable with it, I can be comfortable with it.
I think it makes, potentially for a cleaner, cleaner look right there around here.
Then if we can just maybe check that one off in notes, just so that we know when we go to make a motion.
Making notes here.
We agree on that?
Yep.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor, under subsection J, I believe everybody's in agreement, we were just trying to clarify that the rear entry access would be for vehicles, and I believe Ms. Field confirmed that that was actually her intent, anyway.
Okay.
Four, I, Romanets one and two, the two that have been deleted, it's okay to leave those in, we've spoken with Mr. Lucas, and we're okay with those, so disregard, please, the deletion of that. On subsection J, Romanet four, I'm going to let Mr. Wood speak to the entrance driveway issue.
So what we're looking at, and Carter might can, can clarify for me, what we are worried about is when we, on our street design, is for the lots coming off of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road, both, we had parking spaces that would be obviously within that hundred feet, because one hundred feet is a, a pretty good distance, and so I wanted to clarify if that meant a road, or if it's a parking space, we have heartburn with it, if it's a road, I don't think we have any roads within a hundred feet when it intercedes.
It's both, but it's tied to either one hundred feet or the ninety-five percent queue distance, so if through your traffic analysis, you're not queuing anything, then it's, it's the lesser of those two.
The lesser?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
Condition, just to be clear, currently?
Oh, it says whichever is greater.
Greater, that's what we were.
But what we, we could tie it to is what the actual queue is anticipated to be.
Okay.
So if we look at that as opposed to, to a fixed distance, we could work with that. So if you wanted to strike whichever is greater, we could, we could work with that.
We just strike out that one part of it.
That's right.
So just leave it at or, hundred feet or?
Moving to K, L, and M.
Are we on the same page?
Yep.
I think the last one, counsel and applicant?
Yes. K, L, and M, we can leave in. P, we were looking at a situation on this one, again, I'll let Ken Wood explain, but the granite curbing, that's something that gives the applicant a little bit of, of heartburn. Ken, I'll let you explain.
I could, I can weigh in on, I'll weigh in on that real quick. The way the condition was originally written was to provide them with an opportunity to provide granite curbing. If they don't want to provide the granite curbing, that's fine, just the standard twenty-four-inch curb and gutter will work.
We're just looking for flexibility.
We're just trying to give you some upgrades there. You charge more for the home.
Carter, does that include the possibility of us doing flush curbs?
If you wanted to do the flush curb, you would also have to take into account the drainage associated with that, and so a lot of times, that's a little bit wider, but if you wanted to adjust the right-of-way along those roads to account for that, that'd be fine.
So what should, Carter, what should it read? I'm sorry.
Is that just striking it all together?
Originally, this was part of another condition.
Right.
So it sounds like it really would be better if it's just.
If the typical section was just tied to approval from the Department of Public Works.
Yeah, I like that.
That's what we want, I just, as long as it's tied to Carter's approval, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Moving to condition six, Mr. Mayor, subsection A, Romanet four and five, with the minimum lot width, I just wanted to point out that under the current code, the lots can be twenty feet wide in the mixed zoning category. We have always asked for thirty, and so we're fifty percent larger than the minimum, and I think staff had come back with thirty-five, but I don't think our plan contemplates thirty-five.
Yeah, we'd like to just have the flexibility of possibly doing thirty-foot lots, because with thirty-foot lots, we can do twenty-foot product, which there's a huge demand in upscale empty nester housing for that.
And this is a minimum, this doesn't necessarily mean they're all gonna be that way?
Correct, yeah, this is a minimum.
Kathy, do you wanna, on the thirty feet versus thirty-five feet as a minimum?
We had thought that the minimum was thirty-five for a lot frontage, but when we looked up the MIX zoning category, we were corrected, and, and that the lot frontage requirement is only twenty. And so therefore, when it was thirty-five, therefore, if, if the lot, frontage was thirty-five, then obviously the, the lot width had to be thirty-five, but since it's now twenty, I, we've got some flexibility here. And so they asked that the lot width be modified from thirty-five to thirty, and we agreed.
And that means the frontage also is thirty?
Well, the frontage really is only twenty, but they're asking, but, but they, they've made it thirty, so they're consistent, both with the frontage and the lot width at thirty, but it really only needs to be twenty, according to the ordinance.
So we're designating it to be minimum of thirty?
Right, right, correct.
Okay, so you're okay with that?
But the applicant's okay with that, too, at thirty, or?
Single-family, and there is a maximum of fifty, which is in our conditions, so it, the lot widths will go, because we want it a varied lot width, we don't want them all the same size.
Right, right, you don't want them all.
So it, it'll be a, a minimum of thirty, and it'll go up to a maximum of fifty, okay?
Moving down to Romanet seven, under subsection A, again, we were just clarifying for vehicles on the alleyways, I think everybody was okay with that one as well. B, under six, we've already spoken about, so I won't rehash that one. C, that's the one about the commercial timing, we are okay with. I'm sorry, we're, we are okay with grassing, that we're not going to leave it dirt.
And I want to clarify that, was that, Kathy, was that a fifty percent? It was, I talked about a landscape plan. When you say landscape plan, is that actual landscape or just a plan submitted in?
Well, it's something that, that will be provided to the arborist, he has to review. You know, we, we want some plantings there, you know, we don't want a dirt lot, so whatever the arborist is satisfied with, obviously, we're gonna realize that it's gonna be developed at some point, but it, it needs to be clean-looking and needs to be an asset to the neighborhood rather than a dirt lot, so we're not.
That's where I would, just wanna clarify, because obviously, the intent is to, to make it look nice and all that and protect it, but on the flip side, we wouldn't wanna ask the applicant to plant a bunch of stuff that's gotta be teared down later.
That's correct.
So how do we do that?
I would like to see something that, that is a little bit more than the minimum for erosion control, grassing, but on the same side, not, you know, some, some, some trees or, or something that would potentially be used going forward, but something other than just, you know, seed and mulch thrown out there.
And perhaps we could use the word temporary, to say a temporary planting plan, which implies less than a permanent plan?
I think, yeah, I think I've got the, the question is. I think, yeah, I think I've got the, the question is, the plan's great, that they come forward and the arborist approves it, but what's going to actually happen after they do that, where 50 percent, what's going to be committed to, to actually start doing some of the landscaping in that area?
Because it doesn't say the plan's going to be done, it's just going to be...
It's almost like, I think, we need a standard that's reasonable, that just, and whether it's 50 percent or less, or whenever, that the owner takes the commercial sites and at least grasses them, and possibly maybe some perimeter trees of some sort within reason, or plantings that would probably stay, get some maturity, but not lock them in, you know, crazy to put them in and have to come out.
Could we make a time component, as far as when the, when that planning application is made, that he has to have those trees or whatever in the ground by three weeks after approval by the city arborist? Can we do that, Ken?
Yeah, at some point, yeah, that's...
That way, we know that once that 50th home, and they do the application, he's required to submit that. We know as soon as we give it back, we got a plan.
What's your suggestion on that, Kathy?
Mr. Mayor, we're discussing here that we want to say that a planning plan shall not only be provided, but also be installed.
And say a temporary planting plan?
Shall be provided and install, shall be provided to the city arborist, and upon his approval, installed.
Okay, the only, and I get by on that, but just, how do we clarify that, so it's within reason? Again, I wouldn't want the property owner to have to waste money.
Right.
But obviously, it's his best interest to make it look nice. I mean, we call it grassed, and then...
Well, I think you just say a temporary, if you just say a temporary plan, that gives them, tells you it's not a permanent plan. It's just something that's going to look nice, that the arborist has some flexibility over.
Yeah, I, I, I think the intent is, is there in that paragraph, and that, you know, the idea is that it's not going to be the permanent one. And we would just, the arborist would use his judgment, and I think it's worked so far, and, you know...
I have a work with the arborist, so I shouldn't tell you. But I certainly will do the, what you guys are describing in terms of the grassing with some bushes, but recognizing, you know, that we're not putting in specimen trees, we're not putting in recalibr trees, because we don't know what, unless the commercial's ready to go, and we know where it is.
No, no, that's my point, you know.
But it's the grass and some bushes to preserve the appearance, but not anything that they may...
Maybe it could just be worded somehow that a temporary, as Councilman Thurmond said, a temporary landscape plan, but also within reason that, you know, and obviously, the arborist is reasonable, but just to clarify that it's, you wouldn't have to have things that maybe had to take out later, you know. It could be, like I say, some bushes, or something that, that could be used later, but wouldn't be in the middle, right where the building would sit, that kind of thing.
Greater than grassing and less than full landscaping.
Yeah, yeah.
And also, we want to put in there implemented and maintained, as well.
We might just have to deal. Put a reasonable expectation on there, and...
Yes.
Make the arborist important.
We have some language there.
I think what we're looking at is saying that there will be a temporary landscape plan that will be primarily grass, recognizing it's temporary in nature. And then we can add comment, it will be maintained by the developer.
You guys okay with that?
Zero time is when it goes in?
Yeah.
Repeating it again, we said we will have a temp, looking at the condition language itself, those areas shown as commercial on the revised site plan submitted on June 9, starting right after that, a planting, a temporary planting plan shall be provided to the city arborist to be approved and installed. And that temporary plan will be primarily grass, recognizing that it's temporary in nature, and said landscaping shall be maintained by the developer.
I don't know that we have to put in there primarily grass. I think that that's, I think we need to leave that up to the arborist. I mean, if it's a temporary landscape plan, you ought to know that you're not going to be planting six-inch caliber trees.
So just strike the language, be primarily grass.
It needs to be, and you know what, it needs to kind of work itself out to where it's a benefit for the property owner, because it's attractive, and it makes his property more valuable, but also for the neighbors in the city.
Does the council want to put a time requirement, though, for it to be?
For the actual installation of it?
I would like it to be.
What's reasonable percent?
90 days.
60 days, 90 days? I mean, I can understand the reason, you know, it depends on the season and all that. Yeah, I mean, you know, during the rainy season, or during the drought. We just say 90 days.
I've written down 90 days in my notes.
I mean, because they have to put something out immediately anyways, they might as well spend their money putting the grass and double it.
I've got all these down.
Okay.
And then we're going to waive the trigger, the 75 percent trigger.
I'm fine with that, I'm strong.
It deletes the 75 percent trigger?
I'd let the market bear that.
We're deleting the 75 percent trigger.
Yeah, I don't think you want to, you don't want to force the commercial building if it's not ready.
Okay.
Moving on to subsection C of condition six.
And let me just break in. I know Mr. Mills had a comment, and, you know, following the rules, probably shouldn't allow that, but I did see that you did speak to our staff, so our staff can certainly make any comments you want, if you, to relate that.
Mr. Mills was concerned about the... Lack of a performance standard, and how long he would have to look at temporary landscaping.
In a nutshell, I mean, stake those specimen trees. We could be 10 years out, and I can see it from the story of mine, you get it?
I understand, yeah. I didn't want to open it up. No, I understand.
Thank you very much.
And again, that's, there's some gray area there, but the intent is that it is landscaped in a nice enough way that it looks, it looks good, whether it's a year, or five years, or 10 years. I don't know how you exactly word that. You know, the arborist could, if it's agreement with the owner, put some, some trees in there, some small trees, that with, you know, with the engineer's input, that probably would, whether you wait 10 years to build something, or right now, they, they would, you know, be a good mix for it, and then also, then the existing property owners. But I think we're, we're trying to give it nicer than what typically happens. So, you know, nobody can predict the future and say if this property gets developed a year from now, or 10 years, but Karen?
I just have a question for staff. The sidewalk that will be going along Birmingham Highway, when will that sidewalk have to be put in? And at the time, that sidewalk is put in, you go ahead and put in, can you put in some of the trees there at that time? That'll be more... When does the sidewalk have to be put in, Carter, on Birmingham Highway?
Sidewalk's normally done at the time of the development, so the development of the individual parcel. So for each individual home, the, the home builder itself would do the sidewalk.
But what about the sidewalk on the commercial?
And just like that, with the development of the commercial properties, unless we condition it otherwise, as those commercial properties were developed, the sidewalk would be installed.
I would like to see the sidewalk be put in with 75 percent of the residential properties are completed. So that way, at least, you've got a more finished look from Birmingham Highway.
What, yeah, why don't we, I think it makes a lot of sense to do that, and say that the sidewalk and street trees will be installed along the frontages. And then the rest of it can be the grad temporary. And then that way, the whole frontage is protected with the sidewalk and street trees.
And you know what, that was my whole point. The interior of it, if it's just grassed, where it's just protecting it. But I like that idea with the sidewalk, and if the applicant's okay with that. And the street trees, that will be a benefit to the community and the applicant, or, you know, the property owner. You know, let's say it's five years from now, and the trees have gotten bigger, and, you know, it looks better. It saves them money from planting bigger trees later, but...
We do have an inconsistency, Mr. Mayor. If you want that at 50 percent, right now, we're at 50 percent for the landscaping, semi-plant.
I think we need to probably... There's 50 for both, or...
Because you're putting the entrance in, anyway. So, I mean, that's where it's going to be done.
Yeah, I guess that, that, I think, is going to move us closer to, if you want to talk about walkability, even if you, if you hold off on the commercial development, at least you make that usable space, so it doesn't have sidewalk to nowhere, where it kind of dead ends, because you are treating this as own development.
Not to that, that'll help your residential, too. All right, so 50 percent, to put the exterior sidewalks and the... Street landscaping, or whatever you want to call it. All right?
Are you working on the verbiage?
I've got them all here.
Okay.
If I can read my writing, that's going to be the challenge.
Let's move on to C.
All right.
Just quickly, counsel on C, we wanted to have a bit of flexibility with regard to where the Village Green would be located. Because the plan hasn't gone through final engineering, we didn't want to be tied to having it drilled down to south side of Birmingham Road, west of the entrance, et cetera. And I believe, with respect to the 11-5, Mr. Wood already explained that he has actually measured the physical area that was intended, and so we believe that's a more accurate number.
Can I, may I, Mr. Mayor, ask Robin where that 13,000 came from? Was that tied to some condition that was written?
It was on... It was on the original 2004 site plan, so...
And it said 13,000 square feet.
So that was the Village Green that was agreed, agreed upon back in 2004 as a condition?
I think it, I think the words said 13,500, the site plan showed 11,500.
His site plan, but not the approved zoning site plan from 2004.
What they're requesting is to change it, but we could stick with...
Village Green on the site plan cites 3,000, 13,500, or 13,000 square feet.
Let's keep it.
Whether it's dimensioned out to be that, I don't know, but that's what the original 2004 zoning site plan said.
Right, if I can explain the reason I mentioned that is, because we found with, with the old conditions, as it related to the scale of the plan, that a lot of the buildings weren't as big as it was said they were, and a lot of the stuff wasn't as big when you actually do it. So when I actually got in there and measured it, I realized that that area is not 13,000 square feet, it was 11,500. So I was just trying to give the accurate number of what it was.
So you're not actually changing what it was on the drawings? It was just what it was in the...
It's just what, it's in the exact same location. The only difference is I'm just giving you the accurate number.
Yeah, well, I, I never look at the drawing, I look at the words. So it said 13,000, I would have guessed somebody was thinking it was 13,000.
What is that, to keep the 13,000, how does that impact?
I guess, I guess we could add our, as long as we could add, we just, there's not enough green space up there. There's not 13,000 square feet, is what I'm saying. As long as we can count, maybe we, you know, we have the park in our cul-de-sac. As long as we can count other areas toward that, we can be okay. I'm just saying that physically, that condition would be restricted, because the old plan, it physically wasn't that big.
It wasn't drawn to scale properly.
Right, it wasn't, yeah, they're just, you know, a lot of it was that way. So I'm just trying to make a note that that Village Green that's up there that's delineated on the plans is 11,500.
Typically, you do look at the written number.
Right.
But that'd be up, counsel and, you know, staff if...
Can you point to the area you're talking about?
If we do, you know, let it...
There, gotcha, gotcha.
And, and it hasn't changed any dimensions since the original drawing?
It's the same location.
Or, or have we trimmed it down somehow?
No, I mean, it, Ken is probably right that it was dimensioned wrong, but the number on this site plan actually says 13,000 square feet. So whether the dimension by scale is wrong, it still says that.
Yeah, but if it's physically not that size, I don't want to all of a sudden say, well, we're going to have to start adding up little pieces from other places in order to get to 13,500, because if everything else is not going to be available, how do we make that all of a sudden 13,500, if it's not that big?
And what would we have done if they had built to the site plan they currently have? Because the site plan shows...
Exact point, I mean, this, this site plan and the words don't match from 2004. We're trying to fix a bunch of stuff. And so to, whether it's the commercial that didn't fit with parking, it's, you know, septic systems that no one intended to build, this is just another example of when the words didn't match the plan.
Can we go to 13,500?
It's 13,000.
13,000, but allow them to split that up a little, if they get the 11, where it's shown, 11, 11,500, whatever it was, and then... And the other areas that you pointed out, get a little more buffer there.
I mean, we definitely have it. I just was making a point that it's not at that location.
But you can mass 11,500 at that location.
Yes, yes.
You guys okay with that? Can you get 2,000?
15,000 someplace else, or, is that what we're saying?
13,000.
Then we would need to take out the part that says on the south side of Birmingham Road.
I think if it maybe could say, provide, provide a Village Green space of 13,000 on the, on the MIX portion of the southeast corner. Or on the, just on the southeast corner, because that's what the zoning talked about, the original zoning.
I think if we do that, we need to at least say that one mass will be at least 11,500.
That, that would work. Because that's the, that's the problem, is the way this raised, it talks about one mass being 13, that's why I was trying to bring it up. I mean, because obviously, our open space is four acres in the back, so it's easy for us to get there.
Is there any way to, I guess there, those are your numbers. Is there any way to verify this? Can staff verify while we're sitting here tonight? I don't, the 13,000, that that is a 13,000 that was designated on the plan?
I have a scale.
All I know is, what, you mean to scale it, or whether the number's on the plan?
Well, whether the number is correct.
Can I, can I just see that plan? And can I see your scale?
Bert can do it.
Yeah. Let me borrow your scale for a second there.
I can verify the Fulton County's plans didn't always coincide with their numbers.
Why don't we move on to something else, if we look at this?
All right, you're going to look at that. Okay, let's put that item on hold, Bert's going to scale it. Let's move on to the next item.
Condition seven, subsection B. Single gable or hip front primary building mass with the possibility of subordinate secondary mass or separate carriage house mass. Again, the way the condition was worded, and I don't know if it was the intent, but it looked to us like it was requiring carriage houses on each house, when that was not necessarily the intent. So we were trying to make it more clear that if that was being done on a particular house, that we would follow this, but not necessarily be obligated to construct that, am I right?
And I'll look to Kathy and Bob on that, what was your thoughts on that?
So the issue is actually created by Lou Oliver, so it is a little bit restrictive. So with the, with the word possibility, it's...
So I think we'd all agree, we wouldn't want them all to look the same, anyways, you want to have them.
Back to the park for a second? The size of the green? There is not, I was looking at the zoning conditions, nothing in the zoning conditions, it's only reflected on the site plan. And on the site plan, it's an approximation. It says, it says plus or minus, so we're dealing with the site plan, not with the words.
Okay, well, let's go back to that one, let's just move on. So, section B, we're okay with the...
I'm fine with that.
The wording, and our staff agrees with that, okay?
Under seven E, the Romanet two front porches should have a wooden front porch system. We wanted a little bit of flexibility with regard to whether that could be, I want Lou to speak to that, synthetic wood, or...
I mean, that could be a synthetic decking, which looks like wood.
Sure.
Sure.
So it's, so it's something that looks like wood.
Okay. Um, moving on to the next with the chimneys. I think H.
Corner lots shall have side porches, or be designed with recesses and projections. Lou, I'll let you speak to that as well.
Well, we're fine with that.
Okay.
Under, under G, we were just clarifying what I believe Ms. Field's intent was to allow stone anyway. We just added it to make sure we could do it. Under I, Romanet two, we were having some difficulty with defining metal screen and slot vents. Lou, I'll let you speak to that as well.
I think we just wanna address that and just say that exterior ventilation materials will comply with architectural period theme for the development, and will use traditional practices for ventilation details, not refrigerator vents under a soffit or anything like that. And many times, you don't even have to ventilate anymore. So.
Hey, you guys okay with that? I mean, I think we'll get to that, yeah. Detail, that's.
Did, Ms. Thurmond suggested stone houses? Can we add that to acceptable wall finishes?
Side per.
I, I think we should.
Yeah, because we say no, no more than three different exterior walls, or something like that, but you.
Yeah, stone.
Yeah, I think we should add, yeah, stone. Where do we specify materials? Yeah, we would just add another category, native fieldstone.
Native, yeah, because I don't want any.
Don't want imports from Indiana right now.
Or culture.
That would be subsection J, Romanet seven.
Yes.
Then L, we wanted the flexibility of doing asphalt shingles. I think that reflected the reality. Lou, you can speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, to, to put standing seam metal or, or wood shakes, I mean, is a fifteen, twenty thousand dollar add to a house.
Mr. Mayor, could we, could we have clarification on subset seven? They just finished involving the stone.
Uh huh. Okay.
I heard a separate.
That was actually something you were gonna, they were talking about adding.
Yes.
Was to be able to, to be able to, at their option, add a stone, have you stone as a.
Exterior finish.
Yeah. How would you wanna word that?
Native fieldstone.
Native fieldstone shall be a permitted exterior finish.
You got that, Ken?
Yep.
Okay, um, where are we now?
We would, we would like to speak to the asphalt shingles.
Sure.
I just wanted to bring Council's attention. All the diagrams that Lou Oliver showed us, and we did meet with him, had either a wood shake shingle roof or a standing seam metal roof. So I don't, asphalt roofs are just, if, if we put that in, they're gonna end up coming in and putting asphalt roofs on everything, and if you go to like the Vicary and stuff, those places have all the wood shake roofs. It's just a different character. If, if you look at the commercial construction that's on the other quadrants, they're all wood shake wood roofs. I just think it would be more in keeping with the, the quadrants.
I would agree with that.
The only, and I get it, the only thing I would say is, if you're trying to be architecturally correct, weren't there a lot of old homes in the area with asphalt shingles? Maybe not, not the ones that you see typically on every house or the architectural, but, you know, the kind that have diamond shape or whatever.
After the year nineteen hundred, most houses went to asphalt shingles after the great fire in Chicago. It's very, very typical.
Only an architect. I said, that's the only thing I wanna bring up. I, I get it that, you know, we don't, would like to not have just cookie cutter or cheap shingles, but is there a, a way that, there's a historic type shingle that?
You can do, it's called classic red or classic green. We've done projects this way all over.
I mean, with the council, and, and explain that.
Or can we just put our asphalt shingle was approved by the city arborist, I mean, city architect, city architect, so that, you know, you can have something.
Well, but I think, let's specify the intent. We want it to be not a cheap three tab shingle.
Right, it's architectural shingles.
But, well.
It's architecturally correct to the period.
Yeah.
It's correct.
Could you explain it, Lou? Just what it looks like?
Well, classic red can be not very expensive to do, less than, less than three tab.
What does it look like? What's the shape of it?
You can, the diamond crests are hard to get. Most of them are just a, almost a brick bond, and they're a terracotta color, and they're, they were very common after the year nineteen hundred, as was the Kelly green. You see it on white houses. So it, it's completely feasible to do, and it looks good.
I'm gonna give it to Bob.
Yeah. Okay, well, just so, we're just saying where asphalt shingles is approved by the city architect.
And maybe you can vary it, too, so it's not all houses. Okay. I'm okay with that, so we got.
Just add, as approved by the city architect.
Yep.
So we just use the language, or asphalt shingles as approved by the city architect?
Yeah.
Clarification on Romanet two, under L, gutters and downspouts. I'll let Lou or Ken speak to this. I believe there was some confusion about the description of that.
Well, I'm confused because I see a typo that's been strike, struck through and replaced with something that's also a typo. So the intent of this is that we would do round gutters and half round dow, downspouts.
So you look like period, period.
Yeah, just period.
Round downspouts and half round gutters.
Instead of the galvanized rectangular.
Well, all of it's galvanized.
But you don't want rectangular.
Yeah, correct.
Extruded, like you have on contemporary homes.
So how, so how does this need to read then?
It needs to read, half round gutters and round downspouts executed in paint grip galvanized metal, or raw aluminum shall be used.
Yeah, because that's the way it's.
I wanted to say a half round downspout.
That, that shows you I'm not a builder.
Okay, just one, so.
No, I think Lou is.
Half round gutters and round downspouts. Could you finish it, please?
Okay.
I'm gonna change the wording every time you ask me to do this. Let's see. Half round gutters and round downspouts in paint grip galvanized or paint grip galvanized metal or unfinished aluminum.
Okay, Bob, you okay with that?
Okay, thank you.
Fine, Mr. Mayor. Under subsection Q of condition number seven, we had this condition, materials on the same form shall not be varied. We were a bit confused as to what that meant.
What's that, explain on that, that last Q.
I wrote it, and it is in reaction to the absolute chaotic use of too many materials on the same building that we see, which has blighted the suburbs everywhere. And when you see a good period house, it's usually in brick, or it's in siding, or it might be a brick central mass and a siding rear, but there's extreme clarity and extreme restraint. People did not do cut and paste, paper doll kinda stuff on their facades like they do now.
But we've already said under J six, no more than three different exterior wall materials, so how does that differ?
I think this is more on all the houses, right?
It, it talks about the house as a three dimensional object, because of use of word form, but no more than three material, three materials on one elevation. Let's say you could have stone piers with brick infill and siding above. That's, that's your three materials.
That's, that's under J six, correct?
We think this condition is complicated, what is that on condition?
That's what I'm asking, is, is do we need both J six and this?
Q, I'm taking the Q.
Are we okay with just J six?
You're, you're probably okay with J six.
Okay, so we can delete Q.
Okay, now we need to go back to the eleven five versus thirteen thousand square feet.
It's a little bit difficult to scale because the plan's in one and a hundred, and the scale doesn't go that high. But it extrapolates a little bit, and it came out, I came out within about five hundred square feet of the eleven five. And I will say that that does say thirteen thousand, plus or minus. So I think if we do it, we need to say that eleven thousand five hundred en masse, and then another fifteen hundred, if everybody's agreeable.
Somewhere else?
We've got that.
You guys okay? Staff, is that reasonable? I think they have, they said they'd do that, so. Okay, that's going through all those conditions.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one correction?
You can.
Back on item four, J four, where we were talking about the hundred feet or ninety-five percent Q, and we deleted the language whichever is greater. I'd like to replace that with as may be approved by the Department of Public Works. That way we can work with the developer on that.
I don't have a problem with that, I, but is that all right with council? I mean, that's pretty typical, isn't it?
Rather than just delete that.
Basically, you've gotta go by your requirements of what it takes to get it done.
That's right.
That's gonna happen anyways. If, if we put some kinda formula in there and it doesn't work right, then you have to change it anyway.
So Carter, you're saying to keep the verbiage, but just add the as approved?
Where, yeah, where we deleted whichever is greater, we would replace that with as may be approved by the Department of Public Works.
You want me to make a motion, then we can discuss it, or how would you prefer to do this?
I have a couple of questions.
Well, let's let Matt ask a question, and then we'll.
Just to make sure, on the, on the sewage aspect, that's only for the, that's not for the AG one down below, that's gonna be for everything else.
That's correct.
That's for that.
That is correct. Okay, so that is, that is confirmed. And then the, and of course, you're aware that that has to be approved before you get that, you're taking a risk, that if that doesn't, if we approve this and that doesn't get approved, for whatever reason, right? Because we're not approving that tonight, just so you all know that, okay. Do we need to make any reference to the two thousand and four Fulton County agreement through all this? I was just curious on that.
The agreement was referenced in the two thousand and four approval by Fulton County. It's between two private parties or three private parties. It's spread upon the Fulton County minutes, candidly, since Fulton County is not a party to the contract. I don't, I'm not even sure what that means.
Sure.
It's got a lot of terms in it that may candidly be inconsistent with the conditions that we're about to adopt right now. My fear is, it's gonna just insert an element of confusion to the extent of what it means. Candidly, I did use it as a means of sort of interpreting what some of the intent was from the prior action of Fulton County, but I don't think we should make it part of your action this evening.
Not as far as the motion, but a lot of those elements are still gonna be involved.
They are, and we can, and we can reference it again, because nothing Fulton County did, except what we expressly changed tonight, is gonna be, is gonna be changed by what we do tonight. That'll still be in existence.
Sure.
But, and candidly, councilor, of course, the private parties can still enforce that agreement to the extent they need to.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm open to accepting a motion. Councilman McThurman, you, you know, if you feel that you've got, you know, points and, and, you know, staff can, and, as well as the applicant's attorney, make, you know, make sure just to clarify that we're all on the same page. I'm open. Matt, you got another question?
Yeah, just, just one more question. I kinda felt a little bit the same as Mr. Buckley, who spoke earlier about the town home units as well. I love the idea of the cottages, but just curious about, you know, you mentioned, too, that maybe they would all be cottages also. What's the determining factor about, you know, which way you wanna go with the town homes versus not? I know you've mentioned you just have the seven, but is it just the market, or is it just cost, or?
I think we have to do a little more market work and understand what people want, but we had thirty-three townhouses, and now we're just trying to figure out exactly what the market wants. Clearly, people want some cluster, we've gotten some inbounds already. But those townhouses provide a nice buffer to the retail on Birmingham Highway, so it's, they're still on the table.
Play your crab out, play that crab out on those.
Are you amenable to our, including like a maximum of the seven townhomes in there?
I wouldn't, no, I, I don't think, I think that goes beyond, I think that goes beyond what we sort of came here tonight to do, and I think that with the conditions we've agreed to, which go well beyond modifying the conditions we asked, I think we've shown a lot of flexibility.
So no?
I prefer not.
Okay.
Thirty-three is, you know, I, I don't think we're gonna get there on thirty-three townhouses, but, you know, I, I just couldn't sit here and tell you exactly where we're gonna end up.
I mean, I would still like to see a majority of them being the cottages.
I think, I think they will be. I think that's the more desirable product. I think that's a higher price point, and we have a limitation on the number of residences in totality.
Anybody else have a question or comment, or just wanna work through a motion, Councilman McThurman's?
Want me to make a motion? I'll make a motion for approval consideration Z M dash oh three southeast corner of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road, containing twenty-two point three oh acres currently zone mixed use and AG one to modify conditions one C, one D, two A, three B. Agenda item number fourteen dash one five five, conditioned upon staff's proposed conditions with the following changes. Item three F, front yard setback, ten feet provided porches may approach up to five feet. Three G, rear yard setback will be no, none. Three J, units shall be rear entry access for vehicles via alleyways. Item number four, J four, entrance driveways shall be provided a minimum of a hundred feet or the ninety-five percent Q length as may be approved by the Director of Public Works of uninterrupted access. Item four P, provide a minimum of a four inch granite curb on the typical section or as approved by the Director of Public Works.
And I believe we had a conversation about the curb was just as approved by.
Take out the granite.
Yeah, take out the granite.
I just said, I thought we were gonna say provide a minimum of four inch granite or as approved by Director of Public Works.
We were just gonna say curbing as approved by Director of Public Works.
Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to see a granite, but.
Item six four, minimum lot width of thirty feet. Item six A five, minimum lot frontage of thirty feet. Item six A seven, units shall be rear entry access for vehicles via alleyways. Item six B, at which time that fifty percent of the residential units are issued a certificate of occupancy. Those areas shown as commercial on the revised site plan submitted on June ninth, two thousand fourteen, a temporary landscape plan shall be provided to the city arborist for approval and installation and install within ninety days. Also, at such time, fifty percent of the residential units are issued a certificate of occupancy. The sidewalk and street trees shall be installed. Six C, provide a Village Green on the south side of Birmingham Road, shall, that shall be a minimum of fifty feet in width and a minimum of eleven thousand five hundred square feet in area, measured according to the current setback, and an additional fifteen hundred square feet within the development. Fifteen hun, an additional fifteen, fifteen hundred within the development. On seven B, single gable or hip front primary building mass with the possibility. On seven B, single gable or hip front primary building mass with the possibility of a subordinate secondary mass and or separate carriage house mass. Uh, six E, two, front porches may have a wooden porch floor system and shall have an open crawl space. Six F, corner lots shall have side porches or be designed with recesses and projections as to discourage a single planer wall. Six H, chimneys shall be expressed in brick or, or stone. Six I two, all exterior ventilation materials shall comply with the architectural period theme for the development. Six J, adding seven, native fill stones shall be permitted. Six. Okay. Well, I didn't know if y'all need to. Okay. Six L, materials, uh, one, materials shall be shaped, wood shingles or standing seam paint or grip galvanized metal or asphalt shingles as approved by the city architect. L two, gutters to be one half round and downspouts to be round and paint grip galvanized metal and delete Q.
Second.
I think we want to do aluminum gutters too. Aluminum gutters.
Right.
And then staff, when we spoke to varied lot sizes.
Yes.
I believe, um, on six A, it should be a max, we don't have a maximum lot width of fifty. We don't have a maximum lot width of fifty feet, it's just a minimum, so.
Do we want to add six A, uh, eight?
Yeah, yes.
So that's not, the fifty feet is not in your original?
It's not in anything.
It was mentioned in the staff report, but it never got into the recommended conditions and.
We're going to have a, we have a minimum of thirty feet and a maximum of fifty on it.
Right, and, and we'd like to say. Variable lot size is encouraged, you know, we don't want all the same size lots, we want a variable.
But basically, you're making it consistent with what you stated earlier, you put in there the condition.
That's right, and it was an oversight and I apologize.
And then the last was Q, delete it Q.
Q, we deleted Q.
Did we put anything, did we want to put anything in there about maintenance or is that just assumed when we talk about the plantings?
That's already in there.
That's typically assumed to.
Councilman Thurman, on seven, I just want to make sure this, we took a little bit of time getting on seven L two. We went through that language a couple of times. I had, just wanted to see if your notes, half round gutters and round downspouts and paint grip galvanized metal or, or unfinished aluminum.
Okay, so add unfinished aluminum? Okay.
Otherwise, that was a great job.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, okay.
So.
Could you repeat the motion? I'm kidding. Okay. I've got a motion from Councilmember Thurman for approval of this application with the listed changes that are on the record that she went through.
Does staff want my notes?
I've got, and, and staff, I think, double check those. I've got a second by Councilmember Coons. Do I have any discussion?
I don't.
Okay.
I know a lot of people are, this is, this is a big deal for the village atmosphere up there, but a lot of people are excited about the, what we're, what the city is becoming in that village area and just, just that area. It's, the business owners that are there have been very supportive of, of this, but they, they need help and we're excited as a city to be able to help them. I think we had a great process to get to where we are, they're involved, just about everybody that was here. Granted, it's like making sausage, but we get to a point where, as we go through this, I think that we're going to create something that we'll all be proud of through all this. So, so start to finish, long process. I'm not a contractor for all the work that you guys did on a lot of the details, but, um, but I was happy to see it done and I'm excited that, uh, what we're going to create there, so.
Karen, you know, and I, I've got a short comment too. I just want to say that I, I think this is, commend everybody on this process. You know, we had input from our community, our staff has worked hard on this application, the applicant has worked very hard. Everybody's given and taken, so, um, I think, you know, the council, we've spent what, an hour, hour and a half going through this, but.
Two and a half, two and a half.
Not, not that anybody's counting, but my point is, you know, I, I think this is, everybody should be commended because I think, you know, the city's getting something good, hopefully it's something that works for the property owners and the developers. And, you know, it's a nice process when everybody has a say and it, everybody works together to come up with a, hopefully, an end product that, that will work. So I just want to thank everybody for that, that process.
Mr. Mayor, one, one, just before the, the council may vote on that significant motion that was just made. Councilman Thurman, I just want to clarify because I don't think this got called out, but I think that's, it's your intent on the fifty percent requirement with respect to the tree plantings or the landscape. The requirement regarding the seventy-five percent, that was all to be struck.
We put it all.
Yeah, that was all struck and we just put in there the fifty percent.
And the sidewalk includes all along Birmingham.
The exterior.
Are the sidewalks at ninety days?
Yes.
Sidewalks. Okay. All right, Kathy, you want to add something?
Yes, I, I'd like to propose an, an amendment to your motion. And, and the issue of the front porches encroaching into the front yard, which we resolved with the townhomes, we really need to bring up that same issue with the single family homes. They should, the porches should be allowed. Right now, it's just saying front yard setback ten feet, but it doesn't mention, where's Lou? It, it doesn't mention the porches encroaching for the single family as we did for the townhomes. And is that something that you think is an oversight or something that we should add? Oh. All right, well, I, yeah. According to Robin, it's already in there, so.
That wasn't on the first, it wasn't on the.
That's what we thought.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Hearing no more comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. You guys want to take a five second break and go to the restroom?
Yeah. That would be good.
Our next item is consideration of R Z thirteen dash twenty-two to amend chapter sixty-four, article seven, division six, Northwest Fulton Overlay District, agenda item number fourteen one five eight. First presentation was heard at the June second, two thousand fourteen regular city council meeting discussed at June ninth, city council work session, Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have provided for each of the text amendments a clean copy for you. And we have also summarized the questions and comments that came up from the work session. So for each text amendment, we would like to go through the discussion for that pertinent text amendment that came out of last week's workshop. In, in addition, I'm also going to be tracking per each of the text amendments, the recommendations by the planning commission. We did not talk about that at the last meeting. So basically, the way we, what we gave you for the clean version was the staff's recommendation. So I would like to review with you what the planning commission wanted and if you so desire to make an amendment to include the planning commission as opposed to the staff, we can certainly do that. But that will be sort of the process I'll use. So with the, the first one, which is the, the Northwest Fulton Overlay, the discussion, the, the first discussion we had dealt with racetrack on page five under the allowed use chart. The council asked staff that there was a definition for racetrack and currently there is not one in the zoning ordinance. The use permit appears to address racetracks for both animals and vehicles. So therefore, staff has proposed the following new definition that will be included in the definition section here. And it says, it's proposed to say as follows. Racetrack means the use of a course devoted to the racing of motor and non-motorized vehicles or animals and all improvements normally associated with racing such as off-street parking, patron seating concessions and a fixed racetrack. So that definition you'll see in the definitions section of the text amendment tonight. Secondly, there was discussion regarding whether additional requirements for building components and fencing were too restrictive. And so we went through and below is a list of the items that are currently included in the text amendment. And we have them here for your information. We left them in and, but we listed them, so if you want to delete some of these, that, that would be the appropriate action. On page seven, it says the following building components shall be prohibited. Metal gates, burglar bars, chain link fence, metal row down curtains. Then it, it goes on to say, under fencing and height, one, in yards adjacent to an exterior street, an equestrian fence is required. Two, fences in yards adjacent to an exterior street shall not exceed sixty inches from finished grade. Three, retaining walls shall be constructed of block or poured concrete with natural stone veneer or stone stucco and brick only. If viewed from the street, walls shall provide a three sixty degree veneer as described above. Retaining walls above three feet high shall have a continuous planting of evergreens. And four, opaque fences are prohibited in yards adjacent to an exterior street. So that's currently how the language reads and that's the language that is still within this, um, proposed text amendment overlay. Then, in, in addition, within the Northwest Overlay, we do have some recommendations from the planning commission. You all should have a, a little handout, a two-page handout that Robin handed out earlier tonight. And in regard to the Northwest Overlay, there are several recommendations that the planning commission mentioned and I would like to bring those to your attention. On page two, it says the planning commission did not support staff's recommendation to delete demolition permits from the review of the DRB based on the following. They suggested that staff in the future provide teeth to assist in preserving certain structures, the need to allow the public to be aware of public demolitions. On page five, under the chart, the planning commission recommended that use permits for quarries and surface minding and racetrack be deleted entirely. On page seven, under single family and subsequent uses, staff had recommended that barrier free housing be incorporated whenever possible. The planning commission recommended the removal of this requirement based on the opinion that the market will provide barrier free housing when there is a demand by the public. On page thirteen, under commercial and non-single family type uses, staff recommended the following. Accessory structures such as out parcel buildings, accessory structure fences and walls shall have architectural features and exterior materials consistent with the principal building but are not required to meet the requirements except for height, listed in section sixty-four dash eleven forty-two six. All structures shall be subject to review by the city architect prior to design review boards the middle. The planning commission recommended that this be deleted so as to meet the same standards as primary structures. Under page, on page fifteen, under commercial and non-single family type uses, under building and other structure design, accessory uses such as out parcel buildings, accessory structures, fences, walls shall have architectural features and exterior materials consistent with the principal building and are not required to meet the requirements listed in sixty-four dash eleven forty-two seven. All structures shall be subject to review by the city architect prior to design review board, design review boards the middle. Planning commission recommended this be deleted so as to meet the same standards as primary structures. And again, we see the same language under institutional uses. And again, the planning commission recommended this be deleted so as to meet the same standards as primary structures. And then lastly, on page twenty-six, under institutional uses, again, essentially the, the same standards were, were listed in that we, we, the staff tried to make it, tried to surround between the requirements of principle and. between the requirements of principal and accessory structures. And again, the Planning Commission recommended this be deleted, so as the standards are the same for primary structures as for accessory structures. So those were the proposed, recommended changes by the Planning Commission. They are not reflected in your clean copy. They would have to be added in. And then we also have the discussion on the racetracks, and on whether or not additional requirements for building components are too restrictive, which is the original memo that I started with. So that's essentially where we are for your discernment.
Does anyone have a more question?
Question, go ahead, Matt.
On the section on the use permits for quarries and surface mining and racetrack, were they intending, was the spirit of that, that they not allow, not need a use permit for it, or that they don't allow use permit, period?
Right, the latter.
Right, okay, just making sure.
So the, and under the first one, page two, it says, Planning Commission did not support, so are they suggesting, did they suggest that any structure, that a demolition permit would be pulled, would have to go before the DRB?
Well, currently, it does go before the DRB, but it's more of an informational type, and it has no teeth in it. And so, the DRB has said, well, why are we reviewing these, there is no teeth, you know, do they really need to come to us? And so, the Planning Commission has taken the opposite, saying, well, you should beef up the review process by the DRB. And we could do that, we could put conditions in, we have talked to the attorneys about doing that.
So Kathy?
The fact that the Planning Commission mentioned four different times that we should keep the standards the same between accessory structures and primary structures, I mean, how much do they diverge from one another? Because obviously, they're safe structures to be in, so.
It's, it's design review, and Robin, perhaps you can also weigh in on this. And I guess the best example was when we had for Saint Francis School, we had the gymnasium that came forward, which is an accessory structure.
Right.
Well, it, based on the way it's currently written, that the design standards need to be the same for each, they couldn't meet the, all those design standards with the window glazing and everything else that needed to be in place, and they had to come in and get a, was it a modification? I think the action was, they had to come before, is because it was, it's so strict. So, so the question is, you know, we try to be a little more flexible, and say that it doesn't have to be as strict, but it still has to be reviewed by the city architect. So we try to deal with some of these extenuating circumstances that we run into by, rather than having a more inflexible system to make it more flexible.
So for, oh, excuse me, so for instance, it says, accessory structure, as we are proposing, and accessory structures such as out parcel buildings, accessory structures, fences, and walls, shall have architectural features and exterior materials consistent with the principal building, and are not required to meet the requirements except for height, let's say that's in the institutional, or the commercial, all structures shall be subject to the review of the city architect prior to design review submittal. So it's not that they're free from anything, it's just they're, we're not making them do all, like Kathy said, all the windows and stuff.
Well, and would a barn be considered an accessory structure?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because you wouldn't want, your barn would have to be built like a house.
Correct.
With the same windows and a.
So that's where you start running into the issues. It's not that we're for bad design, we just need to be a little more.
You have flexibility, so we're not.
Case by case basis.
Prescriptive in what we say you can do.
Exactly, so that was our intent, but, but we, the, obviously, the Planning Commission did not agree with that.
So can I just clarify, like barns, because I know that there's a lot of barns being built, and if you look at the use chart on page four, and then the very right-hand side, it says, single-family uses and single-family homes, that's by right in AG one. So if you look to the single-family items, there's no mention of accessory structures, because those are just going to be, you know, whatever they need to be for that single-family home, so we're not going to look at it, it doesn't go to the DRB for a single-family house. And a barn is typically associated with a primary house, and there's situations, and we addressed it in the AG one district about a year and a half ago, having barns in the front, or having riding areas, or having lights, or having covered riding areas. So there's certain use permits that are required for certain situations, if they're kind of odd, associated with barns. But we still don't review barns for architectural items.
And, and, and an accessory structure could be a gazebo, it could be.
Correct.
Okay, so we're just saying, it's not going to be so prescriptive, where it has to be just like your house, because a gazebo may be a different construction than, if I've got a stucco home, I'm probably not going to want a stucco in my gazebo. Just saying.
Yep. So, so we, are there any proposed changes to the clean copy that you got, based on the memo or the Planning Commission comments? I guess is the question.
Questions?
I just have one question, that's somewhat completely related. We make people put in, you know, like the fences, and I know they can even go before the VZA and get changes to the fences, and have to do certain plannings. What happens if they don't keep any of this up? I mean, you know, it may look great the day it's installed, but two years later, with absolutely no maintenance, what, what would happen to do to make them?
Yeah, the HOAs usually get involved, and if not, if they're not maintaining their structures, it could certainly be a code enforcement issue as well, that we would go and make, have them painted or maintain it if it was broken down or something.
But the plannings they put in are just totally overgrown, and, you know.
If it's subdivision, the HOA would be responsible.
Not, not if it's on an exterior street, they're not.
Fix what?
Not on the exteriors, if it's along an exterior street, a lot of times, they don't, they only do it in the interior part of it.
Well, I guess the only thing I can offer to you is that code enforcement, if it's overgrown, or if the fence is broken, or needs painting, that we, that would come under our code, and we could go out there and enforce that.
All right, any other questions right now? We've probably got some public comment.
We actually have one in support, and one in opposition, and one to read in the record.
Okay.
So our first one in support is Ms. Julie Zoner Bailey.
Good evening. My name is Julie Zoner Bailey, and I reside at two fifty-five Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia, three thousand and four. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to address you, and I appreciate all of your hard work on our behalf. I do support the text amendments within the Northwest Fulton Overlay, now referred to as the Rural Milton Overlay, but I do suggest that we include the suggestions and recommendations of the Planning Commission. I think that they met not less than four times, maybe five times, lots of folks that you put in place, they had a lot of dialogue, debated with one another, and arrived at some recommendations that seemed to make a lot of sense. In terms of, number one, I'll just speak to the inclusion of accessory structures. I think it's very important, as do many citizens, that accessory structures continue to meet the standards of the overlay. Accessory structures can end up being quite large. For those that are inconsequential, it doesn't matter, but for those that are quite large, this catches those opportunities to make sure that we don't have some unintended consequences. There can always be exceptions made, right? But if we don't have a standard in place, we don't, we don't end up having an overlay that applies to all of the structures. So I would strongly urge you to please consider the Planning Commission's recommendation that accessory structures continue to meet the standards of the overlay. With regards to the demolition permits, again, we believe that that continues to be important, and that demolition permits should continue to go to the design review board, primarily because this is how the public is identified, with the fact that there's even something being promoted for demolition. So while there may occasionally be a demolition that takes a few extra minutes at the design review board, the hope is that the historic structures that still remain, there are very few, that at least there's some public preview, and that it doesn't just happen overnight, and we've had too many of those occur, and I think that the Historic Preservation Committee would concur with that, that any opportunity we have to do something of that nature, it's important. And I appreciate staff's consideration and work with the city attorney, to come up with some more teeth, so that we can do something to help protect those historic structures. With regards to the chart, and I don't have the exact page, but the chart that Mrs. Field referred to, because there were different changes, it's unclear to me which are in and which are out, so I'll just make this statement, that categorically, it would seem that racetracks, particularly motorized racetracks, really have no business in Milton, as a racetrack per se. You know, NASCAR is great to watch, I just don't know that many citizens in Milton would hope for a racetrack in our community. With regards to quarries and surface mining, there again, the intensity of that use would not seem to be appropriate, so we would support the removal of quarries and surface mining, and I believe that the Planning Commission had recommended that. The other thing, and it's unclear to me whether or not landfill and solid waste still remains in the commercial category, it would seem that that either needs to be removed in its entirety, or at least put into the industrial category. On one forty, the landfill that exists there, it's large, it's not attractive, and I don't know any citizen that would hope for more of that. At a minimum, I would suggest it either be removed in its entirety, or at least that be put into the industrial category. Again, these uses are more intense than what would be appropriate for Milton, as you've defined it, as we've all defined it as citizens. This is a great time to clean up that chart, and ensure that it reflects what Milton intends to be, and what we have defined ourselves to be already. At the recent work session, June ninth, when you guys first had a discussion about this, following the meeting, I did mention to Mrs. Fields, that what struck me for the first time, and I hadn't thought about it before June ninth, was that accessory structures don't currently seem to have a square footage parameter. And I don't know what that right square footage would be, but we do have, within the Northwest Fulton Overlay, within the Birmingham Crossroads, we have certain confinements that say, no one building, no commercial building is going to be greater than twenty-five thousand square feet. So it strikes me as unusual, that we wouldn't have a limitation on accessory structures. So I would just leave it in your able hands, to at least address whether or not some sort of size parameter would make sense for accessory structures. Within commercial structures, it's based on, you know, if a parcel is of X acreage, a building can't be larger than X, and I would suggest that for accessory structures, the same would be appropriate. Regarding night sky, we spoke to the importance of night sky with the Birmingham Crossroads, we would speak to it again here. I don't believe that in the upfront preamble, there's a statement about the importance of protecting our night sky, and yet, I think that's, it's a value statement that we have as a city. So I would ask that that be incorporated, either at the very beginning, or at the very end of the document, just noting that the night sky continues to be an important value that we value within the Northwest Fulton Overlay, soon to be called the Rural Overlay. I have a couple of other comments, but I think that they're probably more appropriate when you talk about art studios and the additional special use permits. I'll just state it here, if it's not appropriate, I'll restate it at the necessary time, but as you look at the addition of art studios and/or other AG one uses, I would just ask that you consider making sure that these don't have an unintended consequence. I know that the work session, there was some discussion about removing any reference to number of employees. I just ask that you be cautious, because when it applies, and it's meant to be small, it won't be an issue, right? But if you don't have any parameters, there could be some unintended consequences, where you end up with a much larger kind of manufacturing facility, under the premise that it's being constructed there. I don't think that that would be the intent, so I think we have an opportunity to kind of just maybe manage a bit more about what your intent is, and how that would be language. But as it results, relates directly to the Northwest Fulton Overlay, we do support the work of staff and the Planning Commission, but believe that the Planning Commission recommendations came with a lot of hard work of those people that you put in place, and we would ask that you support their recommendations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so you've got support to read in?
That's it for, and I do have something to read in the record in support.
Okay.
And it's from Curtis Mill, one six three five five Birmingham Highway, Milton, Georgia. He says, I'm very sorry that I had to leave. I wanted to request that we dignify the intention of adhering to the existing night sky ordinance. This will become much more important as development marches on. Thank you, Curtis.
Okay. Is that it?
And then we have one in opposition.
Okay.
And that's Mr. Jeff Runner.
I bet it's a surprise, I'm in opposition. I'm Jeff Runner, one three eight nine five Hopewell Road in Milton. Couple things, I was, I was a little surprised by a few things that were said tonight. I don't agree with any of the removal of any uses, I mean, you have the right to turn down the use if someone requests it, but if someone comes up with a real good plan for a quarry, and it's not one of the use permits, and it has, they go through a real hassle to try to get it, and get it approved. It's much easier to have it already in there, and turn it down than it is to not have it in there, and try to get it in. As far as demo permits, I for the life of me can't even figure out why you have to get a permit. If I want to tear down a building, why can't I just tear down a building? Why does public have to have input into what I'm doing with my building? It's, you know, if I want to tear my barn down, you don't own my barn, if I want to tear it down, that should be my right. I shouldn't have to come to several committees and several meetings, and pay hundreds and thousands of dollars in fees, to tear down my barn. So obviously, I'm in opposition to that. I also want to remind you that, right now, the barn is an accessory structure, in most cases, but not always. If you're building on its own standalone land, it's no longer an accessory structure. So it has to comply with the overlay under those rules. There's a few things that have concerned me about Milton since its founding, and I think we've gone beyond what Milton was meant to be. The first one is the tree ordinance. I no longer own my trees, I can't control what I do with my trees. I didn't buy into a subdivision for a reason, and you understand that when you buy into a subdivision, there's all sorts of restrictive ordinances, restrictive covenants. But I bought land, open land, in many cases, and now, I can't do anything with my trees without permission, I got to come in, I got to take off work, meet somebody out there, I've got a dead tree, I got to prove to them that it's dead, then I got to go back at some other point, when I have time, and cut the tree down. It used to be, I'd just cut it down. If I want to repair my roof, I better come in and get a permit. Then I have to meet the inspector out there, after I've torn off a section, or had the contractor tear off a section of my roof, to prove that I'm putting the roof down under unrotted, on sound material. Then he leaves, and I do the rest of the roof. I'm not sure what the point of this is, other than to generate revenue for the city. It certainly isn't doing anything for me, or for my roof. The trail fund, I, you know, I want to divide some land, give it to my daughter, and let's kind of go through a hypothetical situation. I want to give a couple acres to my daughter to build a house on, on my thirty-acre parcel. I have to pay sixty-two thousand dollars into the trail fund, so that she can do it. Now, I have to comply with the overlay, has to sit back, my land, I assume, and I don't know what a rural viewscape is, but I assume that means my pastures, so now I have to provide where everyone can see, continue to see, my land, my pastures, my barns, that were built with my money, so, but they get to enjoy them. You know, I'm not sure where this is all going, but with this overlay, it's becoming more and more like a restrictive covenant you would see in a subdivision, than what we thought we were getting when we bought land out in Milton, which, by the way, was Fulton when we bought it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is that all the public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll close the hearing. I'd open it back up to council to, for any questions or clarifications, or motions.
I just have one question. On this chart, it says, bed and breakfasts are only, are commercial-type uses, and I know I've got a notice, I guess for rezoning, or whatever, yeah, for a bed, for, four-bedroom bed and breakfast, which is smaller than a lot of houses in Milton. So I guess, if it's only allowed in commercial uses, and that they just have to get a use permit if it's going into single-family or agriculture, how is all that?
So, basically, I created this use chart. No, it's not that it goes in commercial, it's still a permitted use per the use permit, and it's allowed in AG one. But what it is doing is we're taking, we're looking at a use that could tend to be commercial, in the sense that there's different categories in the Northwest, or now the Rural, Milton. So my first category was single-family, the second was non-residential, commercial, then there's institutional. And so, it goes under the commercial, which it would come under the requirements of a lot more architectural review, the fencing, the setbacks, there's various things. So it's not that it has to be in a commercial zoning, these are just kind of categorizing the different requirements. categorizing the different requirements of the overlay.
And I guess I'm, if you've got a bed and breakfast in a dis, in a house that was a single-family house, why do you have to jump through all the hoops as if it was a commercial building, other than to get the use permit for it?
I mean, in that sense, in that instance, it's going to come before you. It is very rural. It's on 80 acres. It's only four bedrooms, but that's not to say there wouldn't be another bed and breakfast that's on three or, let's say, five acres, and it's a bigger house, and it's more intrusive, so...
But to me, with our use permit, we kind of ought to be able to dictate which of the restrictive buckets it needs to go in, rather than just saying automatically. I mean, like, instead of four, the average house in Milton's more than four bedrooms, probably. So, you know, it just seems like that, you know, my fear is, we are getting a little heavy-handed in telling people what they can and can't do all the time, and, you know, what they have to do. And it concerns me a little bit that we've lost a lot of the, our property rights in trying to be a little bit too restrictive in what, I mean, you want to make sure you've got it so that what you do at your house doesn't negatively affect somebody else's and one of your neighbors. I completely understand that. I wouldn't want my neighbor painting their house purple. But at the same time, you know, you don't want everything to look like it's all cookie cutter either. You want to give some people a little creativity, and it is their property.
I mean, if the councils can change the chart around, that's your prerogative, so...
Do we have it, do we have on here all the changes that have been made for us to review, or just the clean copy? Because all I'm seeing is a clean copy.
The previous from the work session, you have that there.
Right. We have to go back to look at the work session.
You have to go back to the work session. So what we did was, we took the comments from the work session, there weren't that many changes, incorporated those changes, and then created a clean copy. So if you go back to the work session version, that's the redlined.
Yeah, the, I'm looking at the Planning Commission stuff, and there's the removal of the barrier-free housing, page 76064, 1141-4. And of course, in definitions as well, you know, I agree with that. I don't agree with the deleting of all the things that we recommended that go to approval by the city architect, for the reasons that Karen's talking, and I think, that basically, we don't want to be too heavy-handed on this stuff. We want to make sure that we are allowing for the creativity of our people as well, but we want to make sure that at least there is a process of review, that we can determine that. You know, if we stifle that creativity, we lose that which is best within us. But we need to have a process by which that comes before us, and I think that, that's important. So I don't agree with the planning recommendations on 641142, 641142-6, -7, and -5, and -641143-5, and 641143-6 on those. But I can understand the barrier-free housing, and I also understand too, that if someone comes before us with a permit for a quarry, I think that would be an unusual case, but at least they come before us with a permit for that that we can deny. But it's still, we don't know what the creativity of someone might bring before us. Still, I don't, I'm hesitant of just denying it altogether, because that lacks vision on our part if we, if we do that. And as far as the demolition permits, you know, I can understand a need for that at some point, just, you know, depending on the structure that's there, people's property values can't be determined on what's around by their neighbors. I understand that, right? If there's a process that isn't too expensive, I don't think that costs $100,000, but I think there is a process by which that could be coming forward, especially from historical preservation. I, I can understand adding a little bit of teeth into that one. That's the only one where I would agree on the Planning Commission. That is my comments.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think I have to agree with Matt on most of his comments.
You want to say the ones you don't?
I agree with Matt. Not to put you on the spot.
I was just thinking that something that the Planning Commission commented four times on probably deserved a second consideration. So, so part of what Matt said, I would agree with. But I also understand that sometimes, we have rules and regulations, because even though we're neighbors, we can't agree on anything. And so, it might not be a perfect solution, but trying to help people with regards to what the can and can't do in an effort to keep the peace, I think is a good thing, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments or emotion?
Well, I'll try, Mayor.
What?
I go to approve RZ 13-22 to amend Chapter 64, Article 7, Division 6, Northwest Fulton Overlay District Agenda Item Number 14-158. And I don't think I have to reference what was in the handout, right? Because that was already incorporated into what we saw.
If you can just step through what you would like to keep or to not keep, as far as, kind of like what Commissioner Kuntz did, he did, cancel, I'm sorry, council member. It's late, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. With the changes as suggested in the proposed, or, no, I'm not going to say that. All right, I'm going to withdraw my motion then.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. That we approve the consideration of RZ 13-22 with the recommendations by the Planning Commission for the change of Section 64-1120DXI. Do I have to read this?
No, you don't have to read it, no.
And Section 64-11414A for single-family and subsequent uses regarding barrier-free housing. And Definitions, RZ 14-01.
That's a different, you have to stop there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Minus that. And that's it.
So just, so just to be clear, so everybody knows we're on the same sheet of paper, so the other references to the accessory structures, you're not going along with your proposals not to be in agreement with the Planning Commission?
I am not in agreement with their comments on Section 641121, Section 6411426, 61, 6411427, 64114345, 435, or 6411436.
You said 64-1141, but I don't think you meant that.
Oh, I did not mean that one. You're right. Yeah, that is okay.
And then you want to keep, you want to keep the use permits correct?
I want to keep the use, I want to keep the, yes.
Okay.
Did, so are you, are you keeping, Matt, are you keeping it where you still, you're deleting quarries and surface mining, or were you saying, allow that to come forward?
Allowing that to come before.
So allow that, allow that.
With the use permit, though.
With the use permit.
With the use permit, so it would come forward for a review. We're not saying delete it.
Exactly, exactly.
And we're going with what staff said, where it's repeated like four times, so that it doesn't have to match up with the actual structure, but it still would be reviewed.
So you want to relay back my motion to me to make sure we got it right?
I think it's fine. I just want to make sure we clarified it.
Okay.
Are you clear on it?
I'm good.
Read it back to me, just to make sure we got it right. If you don't mind, please.
Okay. Councilmember Kuntz makes a recommendation to approve RZ 1322 as recommended by staff, with exception to Page 2, Section 64-1120DX1, that we want to include the Planning Commission recommendation for that section. Also, they, the motion also adds putting back into it Page 7, Section 64-11414A, single-family regarding barrier-free housing, i.e. to delete that. It currently sits in it right now. And that is it, and everything else remains the same.
Correct.
Okay, I have a second.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Kuntz, and it was read by Robin, and a second by our councilmember. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Sudi, if you want to call the next item?
Next item is consideration of RZ 1401 to amend Chapter 64, Article 1, Section 64-1, Definitions, Agenda Item Number 14159. First presentation was heard at the June 2nd regular city council meeting, and also discussed at the June 9th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Page 2 of the attached memo on this proposed text amendment, under Definitions, the discussion based on the discussion at the work session last week included the following. Under, number one, fence equestrian, Page 12, "Staff replaced be a minimum with not to, with not exceed to be consistent with other parts of the zoning ordinance regarding height." And if you remember, this dealt with the 60 inches, and, and we didn't want this to be a minimum 60 inches, inches height, we wanted not to exceed. So we made that correction, okay? And then under racetrack, as we mentioned previously, on Page 28, the following definition for racetrack has been provided based on council's discussion. And the definition reads, "Racetrack means the use of a course devoted to the racing of motor and non-motorized vehicles or animals, and all improvements normally associated with racing such as off-street parking, patron seating, concessions, and a fixed racetrack." So those were the discussion items at last week's workshop. In addition, the Planning Commission had one comment under the proposed text amendment for definitions, and it says follows. On Page 4, under barrier-free housing, they stated that it was the Planning Commission's opinion that the implementation of this type of modification to a structure should come from the housing industry and demand from the public, and therefore, a need for the encouragement and a new definition is not required. So those are the comments generated, both from last week's work session, as well as the Planning Commission, as it relates to this text amendment.
Okay. Question?
Yeah. So Kathy, I mean, this is, this is essentially all the definitions, right?
Yes.
So having a definition for something that we don't use doesn't really matter. It's just having a definition, at least put some bounds around what it is we're talking about.
Correct.
So the deletion of a definition actually provides us with some ambiguity.
Correct. And so, since we did include racetracks under the use chart, the idea was to provide a definition, because it was pointed out that we didn't, that we did not have a definition for racetracks.
All right, I'm, I was asking that because I'd be in favor of including as many definitions as we could. That way, there's no guesswork that has to go on, so.
And as mentioned before, I would approve of the Planning Commission's letting the housing industry discuss what barrier-free housing is as well. And they worked on that. I'd rather give that to them, too.
Yeah, and I thought about that, and that's why I made my comment, Matt, because to me, having the definition in isn't a problem, because we struck it out of where we wanted to strike it out, and that was in terms of the overlay itself and how it impacts, you know, decisions there. But without that there, having the definition in the definitions doesn't really matter.
Could that definition change over time?
Well, it could. So could every other definition that's in here, so. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Is there any more questions for Kathy, or did we, if somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item RZ 1401. Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Kuntz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Matt Sudi, if you'll call the next item, please.
Our next zoning is consideration of RZ 14-02 to amend Chapter 64, Article 9, Administrative Permits and Use Permits. This is Agenda Item Number 14160. First presentation was heard at the June 2nd council meeting, discussed at the June 9th council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no changes that staff noted as a result of discussion at last week's work session. So we show none. However, the Planning Commission did make mention of two items that they would like to see changed, and that is on Page 49 under quarries and surface mining sites, the Planning Commission recommended that this use be deleted entirely. And under racetrack on Page 51, the Planning Commission recommended that this use also be deleted entirely. So those were the two comments from the Planning Commission, and as I mentioned, there was no discussion on the rest of this amendment by the council at last week's meeting.
Okay. Do we have any public comment, or, I'm sorry?
Yes, we do. Ms. Julie Zoner-Balay.
Good evening. My name is Julie Zoner-Balay, and I reside at 255. I still live there. My comments are the same as they were, but I'll just bring them forward. It relates to quarries and surface mining, as well as the racetracks. Obviously, a slightly different opinion from that which you just approved, but that was that some of these uses are more intense than what the intention was. So the comment would be, consistent with my comment on the other, would be that these would be too intense for the area, and therefore, we would have requested that you be consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more?
That's all, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing on that, and then open back up for questions, comments, or motions.
Yeah, so, I mean, having the ability to grant a quarry use permit has nothing to do with granting, I mean, with us needing to grant a use permit.
Correct. I mean, yeah, I would clarify, even if we have them in there, we're not obligated to grant those permits for racetrack.
I mean, I can't think of a place in the city where that may be appropriate, although, you know, maybe if it was some kind of a micro quarry or something where it was constrained and not even visible, because some guy had, you know, 30 acres or something like that, maybe it's possible.
You've got like a micro brewery?
Well, you got to, you got to remember that there used to be a quarry. Providence Park was a quarry.
Yeah, I believe there may over, off of, really, like that.
Yeah. If they find a di, if they find a diamond mine on some vacant property, I think we may all be out there.
But again, to your point, it gives us the point to hear it case by case.
Right, right.
Yeah, you're named at that point. So I'm in support of that.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment or a motion?
No, Mayor. Okay, I'll try again.
Matt, you want to make a motion?
This one?
I'm kidding. Joe.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay, Joe. You didn't hear me? I loved it last time.
You know how I feel all the time.
Just you approve.
Can I just make a motion to approve RZ 14-03, Agenda Item Number 14-161. Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember.
As...
Was that, was that motion 1402?
All right, let Joe go ahead and make your motion again.
Can I withdraw the motion I just made and make another motion? Wow. Okay.
Just leave him alone.
The approval of RZ 14-02 to amend Chapter 64, Article 9, Administrative Permits and Use Permits, Agenda Item Number 14-160, as presented by the staff without change.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Council- Have a motion for approval from councilmember Longoria, second from councilmember Morik. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ fourteen zero-three to amend chapter sixty-four, article nine, administrative permits and use permits to create a new use permit for a rural or agricultural event facility. Agenda item number fourteen-one-six-one. First presentation was heard at the June second council meeting and discussed at the June ninth council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, on page two of the cover memo on this proposed text amendment, three quarters of the way down, we captured some discussion pertaining to this text amendment from last week's meeting, and it reads as follows. Under new use permit for a rural agriculture event facility, there was a discussion on hours of operation. And so on page one, the council requested more flexible hours of operation. Staff has combined section sixty-four dash eighteen forty-two, B six, and seven into a new section six to read as follows. Six, the maximum number of attendees and hours of operation will be evaluated by the mayor and city council on a case-by-case basis for each site to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. That's the language we came up with based on the discussion at last week's meeting.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
We do, from Ms. Julie Zoner Bailey.
Sure.
I'm still Julie Zoner Bailey, and I still reside at two-fifty-five Hickory Flat Road. I was here and heard your discussion about more flexibility, and I surely understand that. My comment would just be, for some use permits, there are already existing parameters, and I get the fact that in some cases you might want to expand those or change those for a weekend. There was mention made that sometimes if an event is next to a subdivision, I would just suggest that those of us that don't live in a subdivision and still live on AG one land is that we're sensitive to those more expansive hours and to the noise because we, too, live where we live, right? And so I would ask that whether we be in a subdivision or on open land or on AG one land is that the proximity to some of these events and where they may eventually come forward is that those that don't live in a subdivision are equally impacted. And so I was just a little bit concerned about not having at least some general parameters, because other use permits do have some general parameter. I know that I would probably not be thrilled to have an event that was taking place, you know, late in the evening, whether it be a weekend or during the week. So I just ask for that consideration, and I realize on a case-by-case basis, you can apply anything, but it would seem that if you had some general parameters, those coming forward would know some of what to expect. So I'll just share that thought with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have more public comment?
That's all, sir.
All right, I'll close the, oh, I'm sorry. Did Mr. Runner have a?
Okay.
Come on up, Mr. Runner.
Jeff Runner?
I'm Jeff Runner. I live at one-three-eight-nine-five Hopewell Road, and for the first time, I actually agree with Julie Zoner Bailey that we need some parameters around this. Something to give the applicant some sort of an idea of what you're going to base the hours and the number of people on. Having just gone through the process, something's got to be a little more refined to help us decide that. And also gives us an idea of whether or not we even want to apply if we think we're going to get it through. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we would agree on that.
All right, girls, you can talk to each other later.
Officer.
Okay, is that all the public comment?
Yes, it is.
I'll close the hearing and open back up for questions or comments.
Well, I guess to those, to those points that were made, you know, we've got two ways to go. We can be broad or tight with those, and we obviously don't want to be broad with them, I think, from the first stroke. Maybe we do put something on it that's acceptable to us, and then it would be on the applicant to prove that they can manage later hours or something like that. I don't know what those numbers are, but I can, at least, like you say, like Jeff said, they have an idea of what they're coming up against. So I don't know if we say, you know, nine to ten o'clock, nine AM to ten AM, or ten PM, you know, Monday through Saturday, and if you want to do it later, then you need to, the burden's on that applicant to prove that they can operate later and not affect anybody negatively.
I think the noise ordinance is going to take care of a lot of that by its very definition.
Yeah, item number four, does the noise?
I think the noise ordinance is going to dictate. If you've got to comply with the noise ordinance, it's hard to have a lot of people.
Well, the noise ordinance has language in it talking about hours, because the standards are different based on the hours, I think.
It's different based on whether or not it's a commercial area or strictly residential area, whether it's a weekday, a weekend. So, you go ahead to.
All right, so, we need either.
Should we direct people to the noise ordinance?
Or get some input from staff on how to word this, if we pull together what you guys are thinking.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How does today, how does staff come up with a recommendation as far as number of participants? Do we have any guidelines?
Typically, it's based on the applicant's letter of intent, and so they're going to request, you know, hours of operation, they'll request the number of attendees, and then depending on the parcel and the situation, and that's why we kept it open-ended, because we know every situation is going to be a little bit different. So it's not that there isn't going to be one, and it's not that there probably, there will always be a suggested one by the applicant.
I guess, and I don't think we're going to be able to do it tonight, but maybe we think about, or staff comes back with ideas of, how do you actually assess that? How do we say, instead of two-hundred or three-hundred, what is, how do we do the valuation? How would you?
So, with a use permit, there are standards that are, there's seven standards that are reviewed by the staff, and so a lot of times I discuss the different issues within there, where it has to do with noise, or whether it has to do with the type of use and proximity to other uses. So it's kind of, even though it's not talked about in these development standards in the code, it speaks to, I must evaluate each use permit under these seven parameters. I can.
And I think the, having to have two, one parking space for two and a half, every two and a half attendees can dictate how many people you have in a lot of places. If you only have fifty parking spots, you know how many people you're going to have.
Yeah, I mean, it's all going to depend on size and area and all that, so. So, get some direction here, Matt?
Well, I just want to ask a question, too. I mean, Jeff, you went through the process. Did you have a thought as far as what you were thinking, what you'd like to see? Yeah? If you had a minute, we'd love to hear it.
I wonder that being in Milton is really, owning land in Milton is really for the young, because us old people can't step this late. But since I'm here. No, I didn't understand in my particular case, you know, I asked for two-hundred, staff recommended a hundred based on, I have no idea what, and council approved one-fifty. And so if we're going to do this as a use permit, we need some criteria that people like me can go by and say, okay, you know what, I want two-hundred, I'm not going to get two-hundred, so I may as well not even apply because I can't do it with a hundred-and-ninety. And we don't have that criteria.
What kind of criteria are you thinking?
I don't know, whatever you all are basing it on. You know, is it based on the size of the house? You know, because by the fire marshal's standards, I can have six-hundred people there. Is it based on the number of parking spaces? Well, based on that, I can have two-fifty. Is it based on the acreage of land? If that's the case, I mean, I don't know what the rule is, or I could probably have ten-thousand people. So I don't know what criteria we're basing on. Is it based on the road that it's off of? You know, is someone who's on an eighty-acre parcel or a hundred-acre parcel, is he going to be allowed to have more? But he's still got, his people still got to go, may have to still go down Hopewell Road to get there, so should I have, and that's the part I don't know.
I, you know, and I think this is a complex one to answer, because it's all these different variables. Size of the property, the parking, the size of the structure, where it's located, the buffers, so.
But you got, but you got to give us something to go by. I mean, if you'd say, if you've got less than four acres, you can only have a hundred people, or if you've got, you know, like the size of the buildings in the overlay. If it's under four acres, you can have a, you know, a twenty-five thousand square foot building, or twenty thousand, or whatever it is. But if it's four-point-one acres, now you can have multiple buildings. I'm not sure why that criteria is even.
I think the important thing is, before anyone submits an application, they come in and talk to our staff, and our staff can kind of guide them. I mean, our staff are professionals. They can guide them based on that particular property, where it's located, how large it is, how parking is, how big the structure is. They can help guide you into how many they, they think, and if you want to go for more, you can go for more. You don't want that many, you don't have to, but, you know.
I do, I think it's going to be very, I don't know that we can come up with something tonight, but, and even if we sent staff back to come up with an exact formula, that's going to be tough, too.
No, I think staff have to look at it on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
You know, maybe, you know, maybe have staff think through it and give us some kind of parameters or guidelines that they might recommend, and then we have those as a, you know, just a guide, but then individual cases may be different. But I don't know that we can kind of decide that today.
Joe, I guess I would, I would bridge off from what you said. I think we need to just think, we haven't done a lot of these. That's why we don't have parameters, because we haven't had, I mean, I think Mr. Runner's was really the first one that came before, so maybe we need to go and actually start to think about, okay, what would, how would we base the parameters? What, we've talked about general, it would be based, all these considerations, maybe we start to look at how those considerations play in. So like Joe said, maybe we can get some parameters that we could actually look at as a council. Just something to think about.
Robin or Kathy, in your experience, you know, with other municipalities, have they, and I don't know that answer, have they come up with things like that, or?
When I was doing the research for this, typically, they kept it, a lot of jurisdictions have their use permits fairly open-ended, so it can be a case-by-case basis. And so even when I looked at other event facilities, it was also fairly open-ended based on the size and situation of the use permit.
We just went through this exercise, and actually, we're still going through it, but it's actually more open-ended than this one.
Do you have a recommendation, Ken, on what we should do with this right now?
Well, I mean, to the extent that it's whether or not you should further constrain yourself, I mean, my argument's always going to be no, because the moment you do that, you're going to have a case in front of you where you're going to wish you had more flexibility to tailor there would become.
I think since, since we've, we're starting to create this use permit category, because we realized that it was, the one we have on the books is probably not really what we need it for. We can always approve this this evening, so we have something to, more than a stopgap measure, and then we can always amend it later if we come back with some great ideas. It's hard to, it's hard to capture all that, and then, you know, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item forty-sixty-one.
Second.
Have a motion for approval from councilmember Hewitt, second from councilmember Morik.
I have a discussion.
Have a discussion, Matt?
Yeah, and maybe, obviously, have a use permit category, but maybe, too, we can create something in addition at some point down the road, not right now, that may have a category that, where people could come by, where they may not have to have a use permit before us, but they know that they can come by and submit an application and be able to do their thing based on a standard we agreed. That's a possibility we can think of, too.
Sure. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sudi, if you'll call the next item.
Last item this evening, consideration of RZ fourteen zero-four to amend chapter sixty-four, article nine, administrative permits and use permits to create a new use permit for artist's studio. Agenda item number fourteen-one-six-two. First presentation was heard at the June second council meeting and discussed at the June ninth council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page two of the cover memo here, at the very bottom, we talk about the discussion that ensued during last week's workshop, and it says as follows. Under new use permit for an artist's studio, under one, the council discussed whether the two-person limit, including the resident, was too restrictive. They suggested that it should be considered on a case-by-case basis, depending on the size of the parcel and location in relation to other types of uses. On page one, staff has proposed the following edit for three B to read. The number of employees who can work on the premises shall be determined by the mayor and city council. When evaluating the proposed number of employees, the size of the property and building shall be considered in proportion to the number of proposed employees and/or adjacent uses. And then two, the council discussed whether a studio may be located within an accessory structure only where the property exceeds three acres in size. They suggested that it should be considered on a case-by-case basis, depending on the size of the parcel and the size of the accessory structure. Therefore, on page two, staff has proposed the following edit for section three D to read. The minimum lot size for a studio to be located within an accessory structure shall be determined by the mayor and city council. When evaluating if a studio can be located within an accessory structure, the size of the property in proportion to the size of the accessory structure shall be considered. Then lastly, the council requested that staff consult with Michael Dillon to determine if the proposed development standards would be compatible with his artist's studio. Staff did speak to Lauren Dillon, that's his wife, and she indicated that the proposed development standards could be met with the current conditions of property and operations.
Okay, do you have any public comment on this one?
Ms. Julie Zoner Bailey.
Good evening. My name is still Julie Zoner Bailey, and I do still reside at two-fifty-five Hickory Flat Road. With regards to the addition of the AG one, or utilization of AG one for an art studio, I guess, and I understand the case-by-case basis, maybe the nuance with this is that there historically, I think, had been reference made to ensuring that the intent would be that it would be commensurate with a home-based business. And so my only caution in opening it up with no parameters as it relates to the studio and the number of employees is that I get the fact that two might be too limiting, but opening it up to no parameter, I think at least has the potential of an unintended consequence of the intention of a home-based art studio suddenly maybe being misinterpreted or misused by someone that we don't know. But I think the goal is always not to create something that could be unintentionally utilized, and I think based on the way that language is, I mean, if you wanted to get creative without any parameters, you could argue that an art studio, it could in theory become more of a manufacturing kind of facility where you're still producing it on-site, but suddenly it morphs to a bit more of a commercial end use. So that would be my only caution, and I don't know what that specific number should be. I know the other night when you guys talked about it, you threw around some ideas about still keeping something in there about the homeowner being, you know, party to the business, and so maybe it's a certain number of their family members. That seemed to be where your concerns were. So I just share that concern with you, to go from two to no parameters seems to have potentially an unintended consequence. Thank you. And I think that there won't be any more comments from me, because that's the last item. It's been really nice to be with you this evening.
Thank you. Karen?
I just have a couple of comments. Number one, I think we want to make sure in this situation that the resident is actually working in the building. This is not like it's a separate, a separate business from the one that, we want to make sure the resident is per. I would just wait until they finish. I just want to make sure that the resident is actually working in the, as one of the artists in the building, one of the people that are living here. So it's not like it's a, somebody decides they got a bar on a property and they want to, you know, let somebody else come in and operate a studio out of it. The other thing is, when looking at the, about, when evaluating if, for either for the number of employees or a studio, it says, with the, the size of the property in proportion to the size of accessory structure or the size of the property and buildings, I think it also needs to say and adjacent, and setbacks to adjacent property, because I think that's important. You could have a hundred thousand, I mean, a hundred acre property, and if this studio happens to be on the property line, it's very different than if the studio happened to be in the middle of a hundred acres.
I think that we address both of them. Three A.
And number B and D, both of them say the size of the property and the building shall be considered, but it doesn't say anything about whether or not, how close the building is and all. and all to the property line is considered.
I think in B, at the end, it says to the number of proposed employees and/or adjacent uses.
Okay, does that take care of?
Yeah, that's the intent was to, depending on what was the adjacent use, whether it's a single-family subdivision or whether it's just.
Can we add that then to the bottom of D, to the end of D two? Because we said the size of the property in proportion to the size of the structure. But we don't say anything about it being.
No, we can do that, yeah.
Okay.
So, we would just add, does that sound right, Ken?
Well, just, you know, as, so, you're talking about things to consider as well as the, what the structure's proximity to the lot line?
Or to what the adjacent property uses are. When evaluating, size of property.
Okay, as shall be adjac-, okay. Shall be considered as will be adjacent uses.
Or, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a current limit on employees for home-based businesses in general?
At least one.
At least one, but not a, not a maximum amount.
Well, the max is one.
Max is one for home-based businesses. So, I mean, if someone, like in, in this artist case in particular, you've got a husband and wife and then they've got another employee coming from elsewhere to help with picking up heavy material. So, that's three. You know, one doesn't live there, the other two do. So, is that a situation where you have?
I believe then they would have to get a separate, a different type of business license. They would not get a home-based business license. They would get one based on gross receipts.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilwoman Thurman's comment about the artist not only residing, residing on the property, which is three A, but it doesn't really say shall work on the premises. And, and I think that was the point that you, you wanted to make is that we.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe it's taken care of by, by A, but I just want to make sure that.
It's just saying that they.
They don't have anybody taking advantage of this.
Yeah. So, would, would you consider an amendment that would include something along the lines, the artist shall reside as well as, reside on the property as well as, as well as work on the premises? Shall reside and.
Are.
I think the artist.
The artist shall reside on the property and work on the, as well as work on the premises. Because residing and working are two different activities, obviously. If, 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 if that's your intent.
I think she was waiting for your feedback.
I said yes, so, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so can you?
Make a motion?
No, what was, what did we just agree to? That it was reside and work?
As well as.
On the premises.
What, what?
All right, so it's not an either-or thing, it's that, it's both?
Both.
Right.
So, three A, the artist shall both reside and work on the premises.
So, it would be, they can't, you can't have an artist's studio unless it's in a commercial district. That fits under the, this parameter.
Use permit. Can't rent your accessory structure out for somebody else to.
Yeah.
You could go to somebody else, you could go to a commercial.
Well, for commercial, it's a different requirement.
You can't open a blacksmith shop on your property unless you're going to learn how to be a blacksmith. Or your wife.
So, that probably, I could do that in the back.
Or your husband.
Okay.
Okay.
Karen, do you have a motion?
I didn't take any notes. Robin, do you want to?
I didn't, okay, let me make the, yeah, so you got it.
Okay, Ken's got it.
Well, it's just, it's just what is in, the motion would be to adopt sixty-four one eight four three, as presented by staff with the addition of three A shall read, the artist shall both reside and work on the premises. And three D will contain the following language at the end, following considered as well as adjacent uses.
So much.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from council member Thurman, a second from council member Poots. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous? And then as we changed our agenda, we move on. Does anybody have anything, council, they want to report on? Okay, then I'll move on to any staff reports?
Yeah.
You must.
If there's a staff report, we have an executive session to discuss personnel.
You must have figured it was enough on the agenda, so. All right, then I'll open up to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion.
So do you.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.